It came out a lot darker than I wanted, but whatever. We'll figure it out. My hairbrush is about as good as it is.
Give everybody the five-second warning. We're just gonna get going here.
We're talking about important stuff here.
Yeah, full slate here.
She totally knew it.
Good evening and welcome to the March 12, 2018, meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dupree?
Here.
Ms. Hendrickson?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Bealey? And Ms. Ogless?
Here.
Thank you. So in the absence of Mr. Bealey, that would make Ms. Hendrickson a voting member this evening. Another housekeeping note, as you've seen the agenda, you know we've got a full slate ahead of us this evening. Couple of those items are probably gonna involve a fair amount of discussion, possibly some public comment. So our policy is that we will not take up a new item after 10:30, so if there's anyone out there now or listening who has an item later on the agenda, you wanna try to keep an eye on the time. We'll do our best to work through these as efficiently as possible, but we wanna make sure we're thorough as well, of course. We may take a brief break at some point, too, just given the nature of the agenda here. So on that note, we do not have minutes prepared from the last meeting yet. I don't know if we need a formal motion to table that, basically move that to the next meeting.
Move that to next meeting. We should have minutes from the board's workshop of the other week as well by that time, so.
Great. Thank you.
That was a good reading.
All right, so moving right along then. Our first action item, number four on the agenda, William Weeks requests an advisory opinion for a miscellaneous appeal for an expansion of 565 U.S. Route 1 assessor's map U-35, Lot 15. Staff like to introduce this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, this is an advisory opinion to the Board of Appeals. Essentially, what we have is an existing single-family structure in the TBC 3 district that is on a property that has Route 1 frontage. The use is not permitted in the TBC 3 when the property has frontage along Route 1. However, the property is considered a grandfather non-conforming use, so legally non-conforming. So typically, you know, a basic tenet of the zoning ordinance is the eventual elimination of non-conformities. However, the ordinance does provide sort of an avenue, if you will, for a continuance or, in this case, a resumption and enlargement of non-conformities through the zoning Board of Appeals review process. That process is spelled out under Section 5(c) of the zoning ordinance as miscellaneous appeal. And as part of that process, this board is to provide an advisory opinion to the zoning Board of Appeals, as they are the ones who ultimately find the vote. In making your advisory opinion, the board is really asked to reflect on two different sections of the ordinance. One is Section 3(f), which essentially reflects on the, sort of the neighborhood impacts, if you will, of the enlargement or the conversion, resumption of one non-conformity to another non-conformity, or in this case, the replacement of the structure, that will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of the non-conforming use before the proposed enlargement. The other section gets a little more into the specific details of the use. This is Section 4i4 of the zoning ordinance, which really talks about impacts in terms of sewage disposal, vehicular, pedestrian traffic, public safety concerns, stormwater, noise, hours of operation, and the like. Again, here, we're talking about a conversion of a single-family home or the replacement of an existing single-family home, tear down and rebuilt. So with that, Mr. Chair, turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay. And I'll turn over to the applicant's representative.
Thank you very much. My name is Bill Weeks, and I'm the owner of 565 U.S. Route 1, and I am presenting an appeal to the both planning boards first, but advisory team and then the zoning Board of Appeals for the physical miscellaneous appeal, and then I'll be seeking a variance appeal after such a miscellaneous appeal presumably gets approved. So this evening, I'm going to address all of the items orally as I presented to you in your package. The green package, green cover, page M1, states the miscellaneous appeal. M2 is your Town of Scarborough application for miscellaneous appeal, as my responses are all in the following pages.
Would you mind just bending the microphone down a little bit there? There you go. Thank you. Perfect.
So M2 and M3 are your applications to the Town of Scarborough. M4, the miscellaneous 4, is my right title and interest in the property, the warranty deed, as is M5, the second page. This property was purchased in July of '17. Since that period of time, there's been quite a bit of improvements already made to the property in such cleaning out a lot of old structures that were abandoned on the property, old pools, automobiles and pots thereof. It's been quite a process cleaning it up and just getting it neutral to be able to sit and pause as I make my presentation to the town and then to the code enforcement officer for all the permits and approvals. So the property was originally improved in 1950, so that's before 1959, which the Town of Scarborough's first zoning ordinance was invented. Therefore, it was improved before Scarborough had any rules and regulations, so there was no consideration at that time for a side setback, and there was no consideration at that time for the use. However, at that time, that was a residential neighborhood in 1950 when it began to be approved. The Scarborough zoning ordinance, which is now in effect of 1117 TBC 3, presently does interpret it, as Jay said, as a present legal non-conforming use. And I am intending to ask the both boards, the planning boards and zoning boards, permission to, before the fact, ask permission to erase the existing structure and pause the existing use, resume, enlarge, extend, or expand, as your miscellaneous appeal states, the "the use" as a non-conforming residential use in a pre-existing residential neighborhood. And then the variance is another step. So in order for me to satisfy your points, I need to address Section 3, and that begins on M6, and then my answers are on M7. So the impacts and effects, the enlargement, extension, expansion, resumption, or conversion, needs to be not worse than what it existed before. And in fact, the past use of this property was residential, the proposed resumption is a future, single-family residential. Oddly enough, if we look at the Scarborough zoning ordinance, multifamily is allowed in the TBC 3, however must be served with public sewer. There's a bit of property right there, right amongst that 565, that is not serviced by public sewer. They're very narrow lots, they're very old lots, and they're a bit away in elevation from the available sewer. So at the highest point, if I was to catalog the footprint based on the tax assessors' records, the highest footprint was about 2,800 square feet of occupied space on that property at its all-time gross. My present proposal has even been adjusted, downgraded a little bit from your package that I provided you. I've been able to focus my plans with a little bit more clarity in that I'm not proposing a basement now. So right now, my proposal is 1,488 square feet. The old gross is about 2,808 at its all-time high, so I'm actually proposing a 50% reduction in the resumption from the property's all-time high. Technically, that would be a 24% increase of the footprint, the existing footprint as it sits there on the property today, but from the little tiny house that's on there, 24% increase is about 208 square feet, is 24% increase. So it's all relevant to the beginning. So the enlargement, extension, expansion, resumption, and conversion from one non-conforming use to another, alls I'm merely doing is technically resuming so that we don't have to prove whether or not the place has been occupied for any longer, unoccupied, that is, for any longer than 12 months. We're just going with a total miscellaneous appeal, resuming the use and enlarging it by the 200 square feet. So now I must satisfy the standards for special exceptions. The proposed use will not create any unsanitary and harmful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, air-water quality aspects in respects or aspects to design or operation. Again, this is a reuse of a single-family, two-bedroom home, same number of bedrooms before, same number of bedrooms I'm proposing after. I am anticipating using the same subsurface wastewater disposal field. However, in order to get an active permit to renovate, I will probably need to prove to the code enforcement office that the existing system is adequate or a replacement system can be installed in its existing location. And that I will be able to do. The proposed use will not create any unsafe vehicular, pedestrian traffic with existing or unforeseeable traffic in the vicinity. Well, again, as I earlier stated, I have done some improvements. I've cleared the line of sight distances in the driveway. I've worked with Public Works in getting the front ditch cleaned up so that the drainage works better, and the line of sight is probably improved two-fold from what it was before. So in fact, we've already made improvements that are within the normal maintenance of the property owner's abilities. The proposed use will not creating any additional public safety problems in respect to this proposal. Actually, if we remove the house and put a new home back up, it'll have to conform 100% all the building codes, all the plumbing codes, all the electrical codes. So in fact, it'll be substantially improved from what it is. As opposed to renovating, and I'll get into that a little bit in a little bit, the proposed use will not result in any sedimentation erosion. Again, in using the best management practices with Public Works, reditching out front has actually improved the drainage of the two or three upper properties, and we went a property below this downgrade and cleaned up in front of that, too, with the Public Works crews. They did an amazing job, very timely, very proficient, and it was a great improvement for the neighborhood. And then the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensive use, and proximity. Again, we're proposing here to put a residential home back in the pre-residential neighborhood. If this was serviced by public sewer, it would be allowed, but it is on Route 1, and it's a single-family, not a multifamily, so that causes it to be a non-conforming use. So compatibility really is seamless here. There's no, I'm not asking for something that doesn't or didn't pre-exist, so technically right now, the zoning doesn't fit one-to-one because of the grand master plan of TBC 3. I would prefer multiplexes. But you need a lot of land for multiplex, you need a lot of circulation for parking and for drives and whatnot. So as your package shows you, on M10 is the required survey that I will need to get to the zoning Board of Appeals, so you folks also have a copy of that. M10 is the existing structure. You see the long, narrow strip in the middle? That's the building envelope, and you can see how the existing home hangs out both sides, left and right, of the 15-foot setbacks. It does clearly exceed the present front yard and rear yard setbacks, so we'll get into, we'll come back to that in just a minute. And now on M8F, the property is located in shoreland zoning, so I believe according to the staff notes and discussion, DEP has already been pre-notified, and as we make the presentation to the code officer for plans, that may be subject to some additional permits and/or permit by rules with DEP in order to disturb the land there because it's within 250 feet of the upland edge of a wetland. That M10, you can see that 75-foot radius mark, that gets you out of the 75-foot setback, but it's, we still qualified for shoreland zoning because we're within 250 feet. The property to the rear is actually town property. G, the final condition of approval, G, the right title or interest, again, at the front of the application, you saw my warranty deed for right title or interest. And then the applicant has, H, the applicant has the technical financial ability to comply with all the standards. In fact, I do. I presently own the property free and clear, without a mortgage. I've been a contractor in Town of Scarborough for about 43 years, and I definitely can self-finance the improvement, so I don't have to have a third party involved. Any conditions of approval this board or the zoning board may impose on me, I'll be able to satisfy it without having to get a third party. No, I can, we can make it happen. And then finally, this is a very, I present it as a very seamless, straightforward appeal to the planning board for advisory opinion to the zoning board for miscellaneous appeal. In any zoning ordinance, you need to hang your hat on something, and the appeals process is what works for some of these very, very narrow lots that have fallen out of the non-conformity. There's your M10. The yellow is the existing footprint. The entire residence has a basement underneath it, my proposal will not. It had decks on the rear and decks on the front, and a bulkhead, all of those. It exchanged for, there is the, the pink is my curvy for outside drip-end footprint proposal. 24 by 62 would encompass the whole home and garage slab-on-grade, and in response to the planning staff's proposed suggestion or potential requirement for a hem-head turnaround so the vehicles don't have to back up on Route 1, absolutely. That is the proposed pavement to access the front of the garage, give it a back-around on the property, and then drive back out on Route 1. So I think that's a part, absolutely must, any time of day, especially any time before COVID-19, but any time of day, we don't want to back up on Route 1. That's that 75-foot setback from the upland edge in the town's property. So if you put that 75, you can see that even high upon Dunston, we're talking, oh, it's shoreland zoning. You don't have to live on the shore to be in shoreland zoning. These, this is the existing structure that's on it. This is pretty much as it was when I walked in, quarter-mast. It's been cleaned up on the front so that we can arrest the rot and deterioration. I have worked with my neighbors in regards to arboidae and old overgrown lilacs and a lot of junk vegetation. It's been cleaned up, and I do things a little bit backwards. I've already started my landscaping to make sure that everything is well landscaped. I've already put in used arboidae, rhododendrons, lilacs, daylilies, both, all three levels of plants, from trees to brush to flowers, to satisfy my neighbor so that they're pleased with the progress. Outback has been mowed now, so this is some of the existing conditions that were outback that the assessor's map would suggest that this was some sort of automotive garage at one time, and there was loads of evidence. There was quite a few dollars of dumpster fees to get this place decent looking. The place is wide open, and part of the reason for the proposed removal instead of repair is the foundation is, it just looks like it's there. It's leaking quite seriously. The existing setback is only like 3.6 feet away from the property line, and in order for one to appropriately put decent perimeter drain in, you're gonna be right up against your neighbor doing that, so it just makes more sense to remove the property, remove the improved structure, which is really not improved, remove it, put some compact fill back in the toe, and build a structural floating slab-on-grade, therefore you don't have to get next to your property line to do that. It can be very low, not built up high, so we don't have any drainage conditions pushing that drainage water up onto the neighbors. And I can make, basically my attempt is to turn it into, from this very antique structure into this structure here, which is a slab-on-grade with insulated structural fill bottom, you'd be able to drive your vehicle. This is a Route 1 elevation funded. You'd drive your vehicle in. You could offload if you were handicap impaired or mobility impaired, offload right inside the house. All my doors would be imposed to be 36 inches, so that there's plenty of accessibility in that. There'll be no deck outback, it'll be a patio. I don't have to elevate anything, I can make it low and small and have the smallest footprint poised on the property in regards to the accessory entrances, exits.
Thank you. Any questions? Go through that. Thank you. First, I'll offer opportunity for any public comment if there is anyone here who's interested in this item. Seeing none, turn to the board. Nick, do you have anything?
I don't have all what to add, do you?
No? I'll take that as a positive thought.
Yeah, it's a positive.
Right. Thank you. Great. Susan?
No, I don't have any serious problems with it. I am concerned about the fact that this is a... I am, I am concerned about the fact that this is a, why can't I write my notes? It abuts the wetland.
Shoreland zone.
Thank you, shoreline zone. So we're going to have to watch that very carefully. I don't think there's any problem with it, I can't, quite frankly. It's a lot of work for a teeny little space, so I wish you good luck. I hope it turns out to be what you want it to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Robert?
Yeah. I only have two questions, or two concerns. First of all, thank you. I think it's a great improvement that you're doing here, and you read my mind as far as bringing photos, because I didn't get a chance to drive down and see the neighborhood, kind of a thing. And I think your proposed improvements are much improved. So, real quickly, to add on my colleague's concern regarding shoreline zone, will you be the contractor who's doing the work on site? Are you certified by DEP's Nonpoint Source Program?
I'm not certified.
Okay.
But I'm probably qualified to be certified.
You need to look into that, because in order for a contractor to work within the shoreline zone, you do need to be certified. So if you aren't, then you'll need to contract with someone who is, or get yourself that way. And there is a training class coming up, so I'm sure you can take that. And being in business for 42 years, I'm sure that's not a problem for you. The second concern is regarding public sewer. Why not connect to the sewer on Route One? Why keep the old septic? That really pains me.
May I interrupt that?
Sure, just make sure we can hear you.
Very good question, and the reason is because it's not accessible. I cannot approach it. It's, as I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, I think it's going to be up around the Dunston School, Old Dunston Schoolhouse area, which is 1, 2, 3, 4, probably in excess of 6, 7, 800 feet away.
So...
Along Route One.
Okay. So you've already talked with Scarborough Sanitary District, and there's no way to pull a short lateral to that dwelling?
Oh, I have not talked, I didn't have to. There's just, it would have to be an excavation of the, in the right-of-way of US Route One. So, way too, way too far.
All right.
The present existing two-bedroom subsurface wastewater disposal system presently has not failed, and it looks fine.
But you are, we'll be testing that.
Oh, absolutely, yes. That'll be one of the requirements the code officer will make me do, even to resume the existing one.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm not proposing to make it any larger, partially because of Susan's comment on the, and yours, for the shoreline zoning. I don't want any bigger impact there, just minimize.
I agree, but it could be a larger impact if, you know, the septic system is, does fail, because it, you know, if it's, if the above surface is any indicator of what's below ground, then that could have some fairly major impacts to the wetland Phillips Brook and then the receiving Scarborough Marsh if that were to fail.
Right.
So just make sure you get all your tests, dot your i's and cross your t's.
Absolutely, absolutely. With the, that's part of the draw to having an existing structure, in that you're grandfathered for the system as well. And I'm avoid, I'm, we will have a replacement system all queued up, ready to go. That's what I have understood the code officer to be indicating that that's what it's going to be.
Sounds good. Cool. Thanks. Rachel?
Yeah, I really appreciate that you're making this handicapped accessible. But as I look at the hammerhead that you have there and then the plans, if you could take down the old and bring in the new. All right, so you have a front door that's actually on the side.
It's like facing Dunston Schoolhouse or On Vine. This is facing the food program in front of Route One right now.
All right, so... So the front, the door that you're going to use is the front door. I can see a walkway. Are you going to be connecting it with the hammerhead to ensure wheelchair access?
Absolutely.
So that that will all be available? Okay, so it's going to be integrate, fully integrated?
As well as a side door. This is where your vehicle will park outside. This is inside. This is also handicapped accessible.
All right, so it's, it's accessible right into the house? There's no single step or anything else?
Sure.
Very nice. Thank you. I certainly like this design better than what's there. Thank you very much for doing this.
So probably, I'll briefly, the changes to those numbers that I talked to you about, the percentages. I had some preliminary discussion with the fire chief in regards to the couple of buildings here right beside Town Hall for the future of that public safety building. And I had, I had a mild interest in that, but in order to accommodate my desire to make it handicapped accessible, there've been a lot of improvements. Public safety issues the inside. It always is a good idea to try to reuse buildings, but when you really do the numbers and crunch the ordinances into the present day, it's very challenging. So that's why I fast-forwarded it. Brain is lab, brain is structure. 100% meet the ordinance.
You all set, Rachel? Rick?
Very impressed with your presentation. It was very good.
Thank you.
I like your hand-drawn plans. I haven't seen those in a while either. I do have just a comment, or maybe a question. I'm a fan of the slab-on-grade as well, especially for handicap. But is that, it's not a flood zone or anything? I mean, you're offset there, right?
Because of the elevation, we're way outside of flood. What we get hit on is the overlay. When you pull the shade down, the overlay district of the TVC III hits the shoreline zoning, even at that elevation.
Okay.
Because of distance to the resource.
Okay. But you're above the flood plain, so you don't have to worry about it.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just close enough to see that it says slab 6 inches, water table 6 inches below slab, that kind of word.
Yes, the water table meaning the sloped insulation that goes around the perimeter will be, will be basically covered by 6 inches. The water table is the skirtboard at the bottom of the siding. That's called a water table.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was my only real concern, and I figured you had checked it out, but I thought I'd ask. Yeah, other than that, I think it looks fine.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm also supportive. I mean, as Jay mentioned, you know, the starting caveat for all these non-conforming uses is always to try and, when an opportunity comes up, to try to move towards something that is not non-conforming, but when that's not feasible or practical. The way I kind of think about Section 3F is sort of like the Hippocratic Oath, that, you know, first, do no harm. And I think you've demonstrated pretty convincingly that what you're proposing would not do any harm compared to what's already there and what's been there in the past. I appreciate the, obviously, I've done all your homework and we're very prepared and very thorough, and I'm confident, based on everything I've seen and heard, that you'll take care of all those details going forward in terms of stormwater and waste treatment and everything else, assuming this goes forward. So I think it's accurate to say we're giving a pretty unanimous, a unanimous positive recommendation, advisory opinion to the ZBA, and we should have the best of luck.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Item number five, Bell Atlantic Mobile of Allentown, doing business as Verizon Wireless, requests a site plan review for 415 Black Point Road, assessors map R103, Lot 17A. Okay?
Sure, thank you, Chair. Yep. As you just noted, so this application is before you for a transmission tower, actually on a portion of leased land at the sanitary district headquarters down off Black Point Road. The site is in the RF district, but as well as the transmission tower overlay district. So as part of that process, there's really a three-step review process in going through a new, locating a transmission tower. Just by way of background, really, this has been a few years now since the town updated its standards around telecommunications facilities, transmission towers, and the board saw two of these, but sort of when we did that initial approval, it's been a few years. So just by way of quick background, really, the, sort of the intent around the performance standards for transmission towers is really designed to provide for enhanced level of cellular service across town while aiming to limit the overall number of towers that's required to do that. So to that end, as I said earlier, there's really a three-step process to reviewing a transmission tower proposal. And the first, first bit is what we call our priority of location. And as part of that, essentially, what the applicant is asked to do, and the board is asked to review, is that they do a thorough analysis of all other alternatives based on a priority, as the title would suggest. And so those priorities are really as follows. One, would a new transmission antenna on an existing transmission tower satisfy the service needs of the applicant? If that's, if that wouldn't work, then the next priority would be a new transmission tower in the industrial or light industrial district. And then assuming they can't meet that standard, or again, for their needs, is a new telecommunications facility mounted on or within a building? So these are not towers, these are smaller antennas that are attached, as this suggests, to buildings or maybe inside a cupola of a church or something to that effect, if you sort of think along those lines. And then sort of, if that can't service the needs, then the final item is a new transmission tower in the transmission tower overlay district could be reviewed. And then there's a host of review criteria for that, that we go through in that, in that process. Standards for the transmission towers, there's, you know, maybe a dozen or so standards there, and as well as the site plan review standards. As the applicant's narrative already suggests, one of the key components in the review standards, and I think, you know, the first bit we want to talk about is the priority location, but I'm just trying to set the stage, is really around this visual impact analysis. And the applicant has noted that they fully intend to provide the board with an impact analysis, sort of do a balloon test, if you will, with photo simulations. So that's additional materials that will be submitted to this board before you get to any further findings. So I think tonight is really the start of a conversation, almost think of it as an elevated sketch plan, if you will. There's no action anticipated this evening, but I think we can really start to dig into this priority of location discussion. And then, of course, any comments or concerns the board has regarding all the other elements, but just sort of try to set the stage in that way for you, and staffs here to answer questions as we go.
Thanks, Jay. That's helpful. And I'll just further note that, you know, again, just to reiterate, as you said, we don't anticipate any board action on this at this stage. We're really, this is sort of the beginning of the process, the formal beginning of the process. There's a visual impact or view shed analysis that still needs to be done, that we'll, we'll all be able to review. I will note, too, and we'll have the opportunity for public comment once the applicant has completed their presentation, we have received several emails and other forms of correspondence from interested residents from the area, and I won't list those all off. We've got, you know, there are several of them, but I just want to reassure everyone that we have them, we've read them, we appreciate all the feedback, and we'll certainly take your, your comments into consideration as we, as we do our diligence and discussion. So with that, I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board, again, Chipford out here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. With me tonight, I've got Scott Anderson from Veraldana and Keith Valente from C-Square Systems, RF engineer, network design engineer, who can answer technical questions for you. As Jay well laid out, a bit of the history here, until 2015, rather, most of Scarborough enjoyed wireless coverage from only one site in town, and that's the existing tower site that was built in the late 90s up on Scottsdale Hill Road. It's a 180-foot guide tower. Verizon co-located on that tower. In other words, we didn't build it, we co-located our equipment on that tower in 1999 or 2000, right around then. And so 15, 16 years later, it was time to mature the network in this area. A lot has changed since then. More folks have gone from landline to wireless-only homes, working from home. E911 has become a big issue. So wireless, of course, has developed and matured in that way. And so, in 2015, as Jay mentioned, it was deemed that the town's ordinance was antiquated. And so the town's ordinance committee, of course, worked through that in concert with you folks, and also a third-party RF engineer named IDK Communications. And then about a year later or so, came up with a new ordinance under which we're working now. Since that new ordinance was adopted, Verizon has developed two of three projects. We put, we had till the ordinance was developed, came through, and then the first, of course, being the Monopine Tower at 239 Broad Turn Road, 125-foot Monopine-style tower, built to be extendable. This board reviewed and approved that. We've built it, and it's on air. The second project that we worked on under the new ordinance is a co-location, is a new telecommunication facility, as Jay mentioned. That would be C under the priority locations, a co-location on the Scarborough Congregational Church. Now, you folks didn't see that, of course, because that was a subject only to a building permit and admin review. So in that instance there, unlike Scarborough Four, again, Broad Turn Carter's property and this property, there was an existing structure upon which we co-located our antennas. We took the steeple off, put the antennas on the inside, replaced it with a stealth facility, a stealth steeple, and unless you knew it was there, I don't know you knew it was there today. So, surprise, you got a site there on, in the church steeple. The current site that we're proposing, of course, is a raw land, 100-foot monopole facility at the location of the sanitary district at 415 Black Point Road. I've got a plot map up here on the board, and this is a propagation map showing our existing coverage. And the goal of this project, we call it Scarborough Two, the goal of the project is to do two things. One, to provide coverage to the white area, okay? Green being area of coverage. So we've got Scarborough, which is that Scottsdale Hill Road site, Scarborough Three, the church steeple site, and then we've got another site of note here, Old Orchard, we call it Old Orchard Beach. That's a co-location on a water tank. Some of you folks, it's built around 2004, 2005. There's actually no water in the tank, anyhow. So this site here, Scarborough Three, Scarborough, and then Scarborough Four, the Broad Turn Road site, is off the map, out of view, okay? Again, here's where we're looking here. That's the proposed location of the site. And let me go ahead and flip for you. So as with any, as with any new, new site project, we first start with the existing coverage map, understand that there's an area of need, in this case here, again, the beach area, Prouds Neck. And then the engineer at Verizon Wireless develops this search area, search ring, if you will. And that's the area defined in red here, okay, on Prouds Neck. And that's their direction to me, the site acquisition person, to say, okay, if, Chip, if you can find me a site in this area here at X height, that will serve the objective of the site, be it to provide coverage to an area where there isn't any, or, and/or to offload coverage that another site is bearing, and there's, there's too much demand now on it. So this site actually has two purposes. One, new coverage, and also, two, to offload the demand on the Old Orchard Beach site. Believe it or not, that Old Orchard Beach water tank site owned by Dan Petrie is actually providing coverage to parts of Prouds Neck. Now, we'd call that probably unintended coverage these days because no site is designed to serve that great of a distance. There's too many users in that footprint, and the Old Orchard Beach site, that particular sector of antennas, can't handle the load anymore. So this site is going to do two things, mainly provide coverage to Prouds Neck and the beach area here where it's non-existent, and it will also, by virtue of that, by default, offload some of the load on the water tank site. So again, here we are, I've got the search ring, this is my, this is my direction from the engineer, and based on my knowledge of the area, my familiarity with the new ordinance, went out, relooked at the area more recently, understand that the town had identified this particular parcel as a good candidate for a new site, contacted the water district. They were willing to lease this property. We went ahead and negotiated a lease with the water district, and here we are. Like I said, as with any project, there's a search ring. In this case here, I printed this one so you folks could see. This is the Scarborough Three search ring right here. And then I've drawn a little arrow here in blue that most of you may have trouble seeing, but that's the location of the church steeple. So again, when there's, when there's an available existing structure in the ring, that's what And then, of course, if... And then, of course, if approved, with our antennas at a centerline elevation of 96 feet, being the peak height of 100, this is the coverage that we'll get from that, the green area here. Prouds Neck and then the beach area. So I'm looking now at the site plan of the proposed tower site at the wastewater treatment plant. This is C1, okay? And so we're proposing to utilize the existing, we have a non-exclusive access in utility easement, to use the existing driveway coming in from Black Point Road, all the way to the point at which you get to the gates, where it's a secured area. And we will start the construction of a new access road to the right, just before that, and following the existing fence line of this secure area of the district. It's a busy plan, and I can answer any questions if trouble seeing on the screen or here. But so again, here is the existing paved driveway. The lines to the right of the driveway denote the proposed underground utilities that will route from Black Point Road. Again, underground power and telephone will run alongside of the paved driveway. And then, we will run them along the side of our proposed gravel driveway, again, which follows the existing fence line to the site here, okay? The proposed compound here, again, just off of the, off of the water district's fence line, fence compound, eight-foot chain link fence, 100-foot monopole in the center, this is a traditional configuration. And then our equipment will also be on the inside of here, radio equipment here. And we have a small parking turnaround right here on the water district side. Might be important to note that the site itself... Give some numbers. So the nearest, the nearest property line from the tower site is 150 feet. The next would be, I can't read those numbers, I'm sorry.
Feel free to swing that mic around if you want to stand closer to the plan.
So the nearest property line is to the southeast, and it's 150 feet. The remaining property lines are much further away, 358, 782, and 1,019 feet. We believe, we believe the site is a good location, not only because it was what was recommended by the, by the town through its ordinance and through its review of the, of the town by its RF engineer, but the location that we picked itself in concert with David Hughes, the superintendent there, is a good one because
We've got significant tree buffer between, significant tree buffer between the site itself and the neighboring properties. The average tree can be, we're going to guess, between 65 and 70 feet, is a healthy standard of pine trees, white pines, around the whole, literally the outside of the entire fenced-in area of the lot here. And again, we're only covering out our approximately 2,500 square feet to build our facility there. So we believe the view shed impact will be low. And again, we're happy to put a photo sim, so people can see firsthand just what we're looking at here for perspective.
Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I am going to open it up to public comment. As noted, we have received several, several pieces of written input, which we do appreciate. And I just ask that anyone who's interested, come on up, introduce yourself, give your address, try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. I know there are some common recurring concerns or questions. That said, try not to be too repetitive. And with that, have at it. One other note, just as a matter of protocol, to the extent there are questions, just direct those through the chair, rather than to the applicant, and then we'll, we'll make sure that any of those get addressed at some point. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randy Hogan. My husband and I live at 1 Whispering Surf Lane in the Ocean View Harbor neighborhood, right off Black Point Road, directly across from the sanitary district. We see the lights of the sanitary district at night from our bedroom windows. So you would see this tower. Which, so we want to express our concerns to you about this proposal. I did note that, that as I understand it, the ordinance is that this is a section of town in an overlay district. And so the applicant's burden is to demonstrate that another location of higher priority on the ordinance cannot reasonably accommodate their proposed facility. And that we need to collect some evidence about ways that other priority areas could accommodate the need of what this proposal has. So we're looking at what would be included as alternative sites, or alternative technologies that could potentially provide adequate coverage. And I didn't hear anything like that tonight. I heard that it was an area that was available for siting. But this particular site, as I understand from what I read, is an overlay district, so it's the last, as I understand it, the last alternative from all the other areas that are provided by the town. That said, there's, this tower would potentially be twice as high as the tree line. As he mentioned, there's a healthy stand of white pines, it's beautiful. But this tower would rise twice as high as the tree line, and be provided adverse visual impact. So this is a time where the town of Scarborough is in comprehensive planning update. This area that we're talking about is featured on the town's website. There's an overview, aerial view of the marsh. We all know it's beautiful. It's something that we're all proud about, the marsh and the scenic view. This is an industrial tower that's incompatible with that. And it would permanently destroy this view that is remarkable. It's beautiful. It's pride of our town. The other thing that we're concerned about, that we asked the planning board to consider, is disturbance of the natural resources around it. Cell towers are a well-known threat to birds. And this is a migratory area. It's an area of bird concentration. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has guidance that, quote, "All new towers should be sited to minimize environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable, including not citing towers, quote, 'in or near wetlands, other known bird concentration areas, for example, state or federal refuges," Rachel Carson National Wildlife Refuge being one of them, "or in known migratory bird movement routes, daily movement flyways, areas of breeding concentration and habitat of threatened or endangered species." That describes for me where I live and where the marsh is. And then the state of Maine considers Scarborough Marsh the most significant of Maine's coastal focus areas. So I'd ask the planning board to invite the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Field Office and Maine Inland Fisheries and Wildlife to provide technical assistance on your review. So again, those are our comments. We really implore you to protect this view and preserve the scenic value of the area. Thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. My name is Ron Bono. I live at 6 Olneck Road in Ocean View Harbor. I'd like to ask the board, if at all possible, if the board and/or the town could hire an independent outside consultant to be paid for by the applicant, to determine whether a location of higher priority cannot fulfill the applicant's requirements for coverage in this coverage improvement. The applicant has submitted, and also to have this outside independent consultant, review the applicant and determine whether they've submitted substantial evidence and justification, and has demonstrated that a location of higher priority under subsection 1AC cannot reasonably accommodate the applicant's proposed facility. I think it's also important that this consultant assess whether with current technology, are there less obtrusive options are available? I know, living right across from where this is being proposed, I have, I had cell service issues with AT&amp;T. And in calling AT&amp;T, they quickly gave me some changes to make on my iPhone that eliminated any problems I had with reception and dropped calls from my iPhone. It was just a simple, a couple of adjustments on my iPhone that took care of the problem. So there's so much more technology out there today that to start slapping up these large towers seems to be a little bit archaic at this time. So I would encourage the board to go with an outside independent person that can evaluate and make sure that, as I think Ronald Reagan was, once said, "Trust but verify," that the information that we're getting from the applicant is in fact correct. The other thing that was mentioned was that some of the coverage that we currently have in that area, apparently with Verizon, comes from Old Orchard Beach. As I look at the overlay map, there's a much larger section that is located on the Old Orchard Beach town line that would have less of a visual impact on the area by putting up a tower in that location instead of by the marsh. So I would encourage the board to consider that area instead of the current request. I appreciate the fact that a simulation tower will be potentially The other thing is, is that I know the current tower at the Black Point Fire Station is an 80-foot tower. And that seems to have worked fine for that particular carrier. I would encourage looking into whether something could be placed on that tower that would accommodate the request. And if not, that the very minimum, this tower that's being requested, be reduced to 80 feet. It has worked for the Black Point Fire Station location, and I can't see why it couldn't work for this location. Other than that, I appreciate the time to comment, and I trust that you'll make the right decision. Thanks.
Anyone else?
My name's Marvin Gates. I live at 423 Black Point Road, here. And the visual impact, I think, would be fairly obvious to anybody who enjoys a view. I appreciate the additional cellphone coverage. I do agree with the gentleman who just spoke. I think, I'm so much not a expert on this, but the, our, we use Verizon. This is immaterial in one sense, but we do, we did buy some device from Verizon that enabled us to set a little box next to the window attached to our router, and we hook up to the, some satellite, and our coverage went from half a bar to just perfect coverage. That's not at all what we're talking about here. I have many friends and family on the neck. They'd love to have better coverage. I understand that. I'm not trying to prevent that from happening. The one thing I'm a little discomfited by is that there's no discussion from the applicant about the environmental impact to migratory birds. I mean, you're basically setting this in a wetland area. There may be no choice, but there should be, in what I've read, you know, very amateurishly, there are studies about where birds may be. For example, there's a bald eagle's nest right there. When you value things in this world, I value my cellphone coverage, but I value looking out my window and seeing people stopping on Black Point and enjoying the active bald eagle's nest. I have no idea if there're golden eagles nests around. I know those are far more protected. I mean, if this was in 660 feet of the bald eagle's nest, I'm not saying you would have to stop, but you'd have to do, implement through the federal government regulations in order to calculate whether this really could happen or not. You would be holding to them. Bald eagle, golden eagles nests have a wider area. This is about, I pasted off, 1,500 feet from the bald eagle's nest. And I have, I mean, there was one map in here where the area that you have, that the engineers gave you, this is set absolutely as close to the neck in that area. I understand sanitation area, the department is a, you know, ready place where you could put it. They have the land, they're part of the town, I think. It makes perfect sense. But within that area, you were further away from the wetlands on the other end of it. And I also am a little surprised that, well, that's not my surprise, but I'm, what about other areas within this area the engineer gave you? Are any of them, did you approach anybody, speak to anybody, see if they would like to offer, be offered a lease with it? That's about it. I mean, thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
My name's Tim Fahey, and I live at 4 Birds Nest Lane in scenic Prouds Neck, Maine. I, like others here, am a little concerned about the eyesore that's going to be erected intentionally so that Verizon can cover and do its job better. This is a concern for not only me, but other flighty items such as birds. I was wondering if we could ask the board, Corey, how the town decided, deemed it, I think deemed it advisory to land, of all the location of the 26 square miles, I think Scarborough is, to this location. I know the sanitation is a dump of sorts, but it shouldn't be kind of dumped on in terms of cellphone tires. I was just curious, was there, I know you guys have been working hard in terms of engineering because it's a hot issue for a lot of folks, but what are the other top, say, two items that were crossed off the list? Is there another location you can point to in all the town of Scarborough, or has it just landed in this one, one area? Can I, hey, Chip, can I flip a map?
Please.
Thanks. I'm just curious, this, this big red circle that Chip put in, is the town engineer going to defend the location, or should they educate me on the other locations that were...
What I can say right now is we'll, we will add that to our, our list of questions to, to address. And I don't know how much any of us will be able to speak to the sanitary district's perspective, but we can get, we can try to shed some light on, on how that process worked.
Okay. Also, I'd like to ask the board to, looking at the question of, and you guys maybe can answer this question. I was, I heard that there's a possibility that technology's moved on, so there, have you guys heard about this? The arrays can be put underground with a short, like four different antennas raised, only much shorter than 100 feet, maybe like 20 or 30? Have you guys heard about that at all? Maybe, maybe that's something, I don't mean to ask directly.
We can pursue that line of questioning.
And then also, how long is this tower going to be there? What happens if, that there's an outcry? Has there been a popular outcry by the people of Scarborough, Maine, that we want more cell service? Or is it just a 911 issue, that we all have to have this? I mean, I'd like more cell service, too, but I can live without it. We're pretty much entrenched in this kind of thing, and I'm just curious, but the underlying demand might... demand might be, and that kind of thing. And finally, I do appreciate the time. What would be the role of, how would we dismantle it? If it didn't fly, how would we get rid of it? Is there a mandated 50-year thing? Because once these things go up, I understand that there's an opportunity possibly to, and it might be a muddled understanding, but it might be, it's very difficult to take it down, and there might be permissions to extend them further. Thanks for the time.
I'm Lucy Lacase. I live at 52 Old Neck Road. And I've got all sorts of concerns about this proposed tower. I did submit a letter outlining some of them, but the more I thought of it, I've, one, I am concerned about the height at 100 feet. And you said that the pines there are 50 to 65 feet or something. That would tower significantly over it. Would a proposed tower need to be that tall and have other locations been considered? The Scarborough Marsh is really, it's not only the gem of Scarborough, but it's the gem of the state. It's the largest salt marsh in the state, and as prized, people come from all over to recreate, to birdwatch, to walk, to canoe, kayak, paddleboard in the marsh, and to put this industrial blemish there towering over it would just really be a, I hope the town would think really hard about doing that. And one of, he didn't show the visual of what this thing would look like. It's a monopole, and so you think that's not very a big deal, and on the top, there's this array, but if you measure it, that array is seven feet by 11. So, that's a pretty big industrial structure sitting on top of this little pole. And then there's capacity for three other arrays, for carriers underneath that. So, all of a sudden, we're looking at a real mess overlooking, anybody coming up from Scarborough Beach State Park, I gotta believe, I mean, it's right there, that you're looking at it. And I haven't, we haven't, the balloon hasn't been up, but how far out on the low tide of Scarborough Beach, certainly people out on the water can see it, certainly people throughout the Scarborough Marsh, and certainly, I think, Winnick's Neck can see it, because I can see Winnick's Neck from there, and obviously Ocean View Harbor and all of that, and Pine Point. So, major concerns about moving forward with this in this location. I think alternatives should be really investigated hugely, and as new technologies, several people have mentioned to me, these different new technologies, this underground thing. I mean, if this thing's obsolete in a year, that's really, I mean, why would we have put it up? We can certainly forego outstanding cell service until we've exhausted all options. And I am concerned about the capacity to make it even higher and add more carriers. So, I think, given all of those, it really behooves the town to protect its major resource, which is the Scarborough Marsh. And that's for sure. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Lacase. I'm Lucy's husband. I also live at 52 Old Neck Road. I won't repeat everything Lucy said, but I would just ask, I know that, obviously, viewshed is a really big deal here, and I do understand they'll be testing with a balloon to get a sense of what the viewshed would be that would be affected. I would just ask that we all be alerted when that's going to occur, so we have an opportunity to take the time to observe what is actually being experimented with the balloon. And that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Can I get up to ask you one question?
You can get right back in line.
Hello. My name is Anne Hancock, and I live at 47 Old Neck Road, right down the road from Lucy and Bill. And our house looks directly at the Scarborough Sanitary District. But my main concern is for the birds that use the Scarborough Marsh. Scarborough Marsh, as you probably already know, is officially designated as an important bird area, and that's not a designation that comes lightly. It's a vastly important nesting area. Huge numbers of migratory birds go through there. I worry about a cell tower and its impact on that migration. And I just think this is a very poor location for such a huge blemish, as Lucy put it. Please remember that when you're considering this location.
Thank you.
Tim Fahey, 4 Birds Nest Lane. Thanks for round two. Just a quick question. When might the schedule of this thing go on? Because I think erecting or putting a balloon up, say, Memorial Day weekend, might provide more ample feedback from the tourists that supply this place, some serious bucks. I'm not sure what the schedule is. Maybe you can?
We'll definitely discuss that in a couple minutes. Thank you. Good question.
And so it's not tomorrow?
My name is Ken Murphy. I live also at 21, at Old Neck Road, number 21. Lest this discussion sound like a concern of Old Neck Road only, I want to tell you that I always remember the day I came to Scarborough and stood on that beach and met some very much older man than I was at the time, describing almost in tears because he was leaving town, about the beauty of that place. And I really do think, you know, as we, technology will keep marching on, we'll always be, we'll see new kinds of towers and new kinds of technologies, all these things that we think we have to have. And they'll come and they'll replace themselves, but once that view is messed up with this industrial kind of structure, it's gone. The other thing, the only other comment I want to say is that, of all respect to Verizon, I mean, I happen to have, and one of the other guys, AT&amp;T, for my coverage. And I can go up and down Black Point Road, down to Proust Neck, and out on Furry Beach, and I have excellent coverage. And it raises the question, at least in my mind, how did they do it without having to blemish the look of Scarborough Beach? Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy Penoyer, and I'm 14 High Point Road. I don't believe my personal viewshed will be affected by this, but as a volunteer for a number of organizations in Scarborough for the Marsh, just again, pointing out just how jarring this is for this absolutely lovely landscape that Scarborough really has as a treasure. So, Corey, sorry, repetitive, but I think it just bears repeating at the end of all of this, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for all those comments, and thanks again for the written input as well. I know we've all been taking notes, and we will do our best to make sure that the questions and concerns that you raised get addressed through us and through staff as appropriate. So, to kick things off, Rick, do you have any thing you'd like to ask or comment on?
You know, at this point, until, I've heard the public comment, and some, well, that makes sense to me, but at this point, no, I don't. I mean, I think it's still pretty preliminary. I think that that balloon test would be, because at that point, maybe some of the folks would look at it and think, well, that's not that bad, or maybe they'll look at it and think, well, it's even worse than I thought. But at this point, I think I'd just be wasting everybody's time to talk too much. I've looked over all the information, but...
And maybe out of the gate, it would be helpful to have some combination of staff and the applicant just briefly talk through how that balloon process works and the timing and notification and all that, obviously isn't an understandable recurring question.
So, if I could, I just wanted, so it sounds like there's a little bit of confusion around sort of the, what the town's sort of role in this is. So, the sanitary district is a separate entity from the town. It is the town of Scarborough Sanitary District, but they have a separate Board of Directors that are voted on and by the residents. So, they actually are separate from the town government, so just so folks are aware of that. We certainly work closely with them in a lot of ways, but I just think that relationship's important to understand. I think one of the other things I was hearing a little confusion around is, you know, this location wasn't chosen by the town, and this particular location was chosen by Verizon. What the town did do a number of years ago is, we adopted the Transmission Tower Overlay District. That was a very public process that the town undertook back in, I think it was, let's say, 09 or 2010. Again, recognizing sort of at the direction of council, staff worked to try to address the concerns around cellphone capacity and service in town, and had a number of experts and consultants sort of help the community work through different ways to approach those deficiencies in town, and that's how the Transmission Tower Overlay District areas were identified. And this was one of the areas. There are others in town, and we can sort of call up the zoning map to look at those as well. But so, just in regards to this particular location, that wasn't sort of a town request. That's what Verizon has identified as their needs, but certainly, the Overlay District was a broader public conversation that had to do the council process with a lot of due diligence that went into that. So, and then, sorry, Mr. Chair, sort of take this on a little bit different tangent, but then to the exact balloon test timing, I know that was something the applicant wanted to address. They know that in their narrative, so we can...
That was helpful. Thank you. Go ahead.
The balloon, just as we did with Scarborough Four, Artic Carter's property there.
And sorry, just so, as a frame of reference for people, Scarborough Four is out Broad Turn and sort of Carter Brook area.
Yep, 239 Broad Turn Road. I'm going to give a quick review on that process because it'll match this one, and folks may find value in driving down some of the roads past that, because you can see it from some locations, and it's a good rendition of what may happen here. With regard to the balloon float specifically, we'll work to schedule a date. It'll be publicly noticed, just as this meeting was. We'll float the balloon. Everyone can see it. Typically, it's a Saturday with a bad wind day on the Sunday, or bad weather day. We usually have the balloon up in the morning by 8:00 a.m. Chances are good that winds will pick up, and by 11 or 12 o'clock, it's blowing over in trees and of no use to anybody, but we'll leave it up at least till noon, if not 1:00 or 2:00, depending on the weather. The balloon itself is a five-to-six-foot diameter weather balloon, typically red or orange to make it easy to see. We float it. One person stays on site to monitor it, make sure that when it blows over, the string isn't hung up or compromised by nearby trees. Two others drive the area, all public roads. We don't go on private property. We drive all public roads, and we photo the balloon from any vantage point which can be seen. We take those photos back to the office, and they superimpose with the use of Adobe Illustrator, or sorry, Photoshop, the proposed cell site to scale. Now, based on the letters that the town received to date, thank you, Jamel Al-Furad, and those of you by the way, we've read all the letters as well. A lot of those commented on the idea that they prefer to see, if worst came to worst, they prefer to see a monopine. So, the revised plans that we submitted actually show monopine as well. In other words, we're leaving it to the town to decide whether a monopole or a monopine would suffice. Here's the monopine. Sorry. Again, same style tower is at 239 Broad Turn Road. Okay? The branches start at about 40 feet down, so well below the existing canopy, and then they go right to the top, and there's actually a canopy, oh, sorry, there's a branch cap that sits on top of the 100-foot pole. It's essentially a monopole with synthetic branches. We will simulate both monopole and monopine in our viewshed analysis for consideration. In some cases, the monopine has its place, in some cases, it doesn't. Those you can't see work really well. I think the Carter Road site is a good, was a good sighting for a monopine. There's only a couple of locations from which you can see it, and those locations are not bore sight or obvious or direct views. And so, as you're driving down Broad Turn Road, you don't really pick up on it because you're looking through trees to see a tree. And so, perhaps some of the views from the marsh may be too obvious, and leaving it a monopole might be the way to go. Perhaps a monopine is what the board chose. Either way, we'll leave it to you to decide.
Thank you.
I have some questions. I'll just up there.
Sure.
I think, I like, I think I like the tree better myself, but I'll have to see it. In the package that you supplied to us, it appears that you looked at 11 different sites. Is that accurate? Or is that?
We, you know what, and a lot of the questions from the folks here, I'm glad you asked. A lot of the folks from the questions here were related to the priority of locations.
Yeah, because I've got 11 different, pretty well laid out.
Oh, you're, I think you're actually looking at, so a couple of different things I'd like to hit quickly here if I could. One is the priority of locations. Two is the RF report that I included in the application. There's two RF reports. One is by our own engineer. The other is from the town's RF engineer that it hired to prepare this new ordinance. So, I remember, I recall somebody asked about hiring a third-party engineer. I think the board is, I think the town has done that. I think they hired Martin Grid Partners to review our application. But in addition, the town already had input from a third-party RF engineer who provided us with this suggested overlay district approach to town. Anyhow, priority of locations. So, back to my search ring if I could here. So, again, from the beginning, here we are with our existing coverage map. Again, the goal is to provide coverage to Proust Neck. Okay? That can't be done from areas off of Proust Neck. It's got to be done from Proust Neck in the area where you're trying to provide coverage pushing outwards. And Keith Valente here can answer the technical questions, but I'm just going to give you a basic rundown. So, that's the area which we're trying to provide coverage. It's Proust Neck as well as the beach area, hence the search area. Again, find a site in this location here that will work. The antennas need to be at 96-foot centerline, and that will serve the goal of this particular area here. Okay? Now, in looking at this search ring, the first thing I'm going to do, like I did with Scarborough Three, the church steeple site, is I'm going to look for a steeple. I'm going to look for an existing tower. If it's close, I'm going to look for it and suggest that my engineer consider it before building a new tower. This is the approach, this is the approach we take with every project. We've got, it's a function of height, line of sight, to promote line of sight from the antennas to the user, and then, of course, being in the area which you're trying to serve. Again, here's the, here's the search area here. Okay? There are no buildings within the search area or close to it that will suffice on Proust Neck. Somebody mentioned the US Cellular flagpole at Black Point Road Fire Station. That tower is physically not capable of co-location by a carrier. That was designed strictly for US Cellular's three antennas and the town's, I think, one town whip antenna on top. That's it. And so, and actually, in the town engineer's RF report of 2015, he notes as much. So, that site is located right at, you folks know, right at the elbow here. Okay? So, we walk those priority locations in every case, because anything we can do to prevent from having you build a tower, we will do that. Real quick on, so we talked about stealthing, monopole, monopine, the town's decision to make there. In either case, it could be built to be extendable. In addition to the comments that I read about concerns about viewshed, there are also comments that came back talking about, well, is that tower tall enough to suit additional co-locations? We don't want our tower farmed. So, in other words, if the tower's too short, and only a couple of users can make use of it, does that mean we're going to want to open a second tower in the same area? Well, what we've committed to doing is, like we did with the Broad Turn Road site, is building this tower and the foundation suitable to be extended. We don't need any more height, but know that it will be available or capable of that load should another carrier say, hey, gee whiz, that site, that's too low. They'd come before you, permit properly, and then perhaps extend it if necessary, if the board approved it. necessary, if the board approved it. Environmental, lots of comments in the record about potential bird impact. Doing this for 18 years and, from what I understand, the concern that the US Forest Service has raised with regard to potential migratory bird impact is not with the physical structure itself. It's the lighting on a tower, which can skew the bird's orientation. This tower will not be lit. It will not have an impact on migratory birds. Yes, one of the requirements in the town's ordinance is that we run a NEPA screen, run NEPA impact. We will do that, which includes review by US Forest Service, State Store Preservation Office, Tribal Store Preservation Office. We'll run through all those points. That report is typically ordered when we have some sense of what type of structure and where it's gonna be located. It will be approved by you folks. You know, once we get a warm fuzzy, I can say, okay, it's looking like 100-foot monopine in this location. We'll order the NEPA. That way, the folks reviewing it at the state and federal levels have a better idea of what, what they're reviewing, what they're looking at. And I can speak to alternative technologies, but I think I'd rather have Keith do that, if you're interested, so.
I think we will be, but I'll...
Sure. Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Rachel?
Yeah, I've, I'm looking at a couple, if you can flip over a couple to the proposed area. All right, that, that's, no, I think that's what you have that will, would be covered, that represents what would be covered. What we've got in a letter from the fire department and public safety here is the difficulty of accessing Higgins Beach and the cellphone reception at Higgins Beach. So, this proposal actually doesn't propose to do anything about that. Is that correct?
It will hit portions of Higgins Beach. The, the other, the other point to make about the public, both police chief and fire, is that there, they were interested in connecting their own equipment to this tower, which we've said, we've agreed to do, and that will improve their own two-way system. So, I haven't seen any coverage maps for their footprint. This, of course, is for Verizon Wireless, but when they put their equipment on our tower, again, at no cost to the town, they will conceivably have their own, you know, propagation map and improve coverage for their own two-way system.
But it doesn't change the cellphone reception in Higgins Beach or the problems?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it goes, I wouldn't say it goes uncovered.
Yeah, because like, you can see where Higgins Beach is and right there, nothing there. Let's go back to the Black Point Road Fire Station. It already has one tower on it, it's not yours.
That's correct.
Is there something against putting a second one there?
Yes, the tower is physically incapable of co-locating antennas on it.
No, a second tower?
Well, there's no phys, there's no ground space to put a second tower there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you, you explored that already?
Yep, with Tom Hall.
Did you explore across the street, you can't catch it, near the property?
I did not, no. No, we're getting, at that point, you're starting to get out and away from, out and away from Proust Neck. The other, the other piece, the other piece to this is that the town's ordinance requires that we look at parcels that are 25 acres in size and that the tower itself be, the tower setback itself be 100%, I'm sorry, 150% the height of the tower. So, again, 100-foot tower, I have to be able to achieve a minimum 150-foot setback.
It can't catch us right across the street from Black Point Fire.
Yep, yep, understood.
I, I'm not sure, I can pull up the zoning map, but it's, it's not in the, it's not in the Transmission Tower Overlay District, so it's not one of the locations that was, that would be able to have a new tower put on it.
And in terms of the construction that you're proposing there, that site does have some historical significance, going back to the time of the Native Americans. Have you done any sort of look at that?
Once again, once we have a better idea of the type of tower and the location that might get approved, we'll run, we'll run through THPO. Yes.
And we've got a little problem here of the, you know, the cart and the horse. One of the things that we would also have to know prior to approval, I think, is whether that site has been examined for archaeological significance.
Right, I guess, like we did with the last site, I would request that we make that a condition of approval, that it passes muster with, with tribal, as well as, as well as SHPO, as well as US Forest Service. Fish and Wildlife, sorry.
I don't mind moving on, but I, I will have some more questions about the process they went through with all, looking at all of the sites, if we can, at some point, get to there.
Thank you. Robert?
I would yield to Rachel if she wants to continue talking about the priority of the locations.
Sure.
Yeah. Please do.
Yeah, we don't really have time limits anyway.
Right.
Yeah. All right, then, in, in that case, let's, let's go back to all of the priorities. I circled all of them. So, when you say that you took a look at all of these, if you could really...
Sure.
...talk in detail about the existing transmission towers.
Sure.
So, what, what were your findings? What, how do you actually look at them and what are your findings on all of them?
Again, back, I keep, we keep showing this map and I know you might get tired of it. But again, this is the search area map. The goal is to find a site inside this ring or in very close proximity to it. There are no...
Excuse me, so you're saying that that ring is the only possible land area where you could put a tower that would cover Proust Neck?
That's correct.
I'm trying to get all of the parameters.
Yes, yes. And that coupled by a, a height, no, no lower than a centerline elevation of 96 feet or peak height of 100 feet, let's just stick to that number. At 100 feet inside that ring, that will serve the, the objective of the site.
Right. Now, how do you determine how you get to that ring?
How, how's the ring created? Is that what you mean? Okay, sure. Going back to the original coverage map. So, they're looking at, looking at the fact that there's limited or no coverage along Proust Neck, along the beaches, as well as a capacity issue with this site here that seems to be serving much further than they're intended. From, again, this is the Old Orchard Beach Water Tank Site that shoots up along the coastline here and catches some of Proust Neck here. So, the idea is that there's enough of demand here on Proust Neck. There's a lack of coverage period along Proust Neck. Again, the white area, no coverage, green area coverage, that warrants the need for a new site in that area. And so, going from that map there, the engineer creates the search area here, saying, find me something in this area here at 100 feet, and that will serve the objective of the project.
Okay, then, next, I'm assuming, Jay, that there are no industrial, light industrial areas where that would be possible?
Not near this location. Industrial districts are, are some distance from here. I don't know if towers, you know, that's beyond my, beyond my expertise if any of those towers would service. But I will do, actually, this is a good opportunity to circle back to the question about peer reviews. When, again, this ordinance was adopted some eight, nine years ago at this point, we actually had a workshop with the planning board. I think Corey might be the only one. Susan might have been on the board at that time as well, now that I think about it. We recognize that there's certainly some technical capacity here that, you know, staff just doesn't have in terms of these RF studies and, you know, propagation maps and all, all this stuff. So, one of the items that we talked about with the board is by, just by practice, when these applications come in, we send them out for peer review, like we do with many other type of applications for stormwater and traffic. We felt clearly this is an area that we're gonna need some expertise and assistance. So, as board members will note, you know, this was on your agenda previously. We didn't get to it due to time constraints. We did have a peer review, look at it and provide a memo. We have sent out the revised materials that were provided to the board in advance of this meeting. And we were actually waiting on, we were hopeful to receive a memo on that, but we did not receive that prior to tonight. But certainly, that's something we'll forward along soon as we get it and, you know, we're sort of at the stage in the process where we have a bit of time, but we'll be sure, leading into future meetings, that we get things more timely. But I just wanna let the board know and folks out there know that that process is underway.
Okay, so there is no, I'm, I'm going through the performance standards.
I'm on C, oh, B or C now? We're on C now.
Well, I think, yeah, B is the, the question of the industrial, light industrial areas.
Yes.
And there are none within...
Correct.
...the, the appropriate range. Okay, new telecommunications facilities.
Defined by the town of Scarborough and its zoning ordinance says, quote, "Facilities used for wireless transmission and reception of voice or data mounted on or enclosed within a building, structure, et cetera, et cetera." So, we call that a building co-location, slang term in the industry. In other words, our Scarborough Three site at the Scarborough Congressional Church, when looking at the search ring for that project, two years ago, there's the red search ring in this case, and, of course, we identified the church steeple there, straight to code enforcement for that project. So, that served the goal well for that, that site.
And you found no other possible co-location areas?
That's correct. I wish that I did.
What, what did you look at?
I looked at the search area, in the search ring. There are no buildings that, upon which to co-locate antennas at 100 feet, anywhere on Proust Neck for that matter. But there's nothing in the search ring. Sorry.
So, that gets us to the new transmission towers. Our role as the board is to find that the applicant has submitted substantial evidence and justification. And that's what I think we're trying, we're really trying to do here.
Right.
I'm struggling at it for a way to, to express this. I guess the, actually, the, the very basic question goes all the way back to the initial question of why you decided you wanted to put a tower, or why you decided that Proust Neck was the ideal place for Verizon to increase its transmission facilities and not some other section of Scarborough that was underserved or not served by Verizon.
Yeah. So, you're asking why we want to build a site here?
Yeah.
Sure. Because there's, don't take my word for it. I know a lot of the letters that were written, though they're not very friendly, they did, they did admit to the fact that coverage here is weak, if nonexistent, both on the neck itself and along the beach. Our maps, of course, show that as well. In addition, something that some folks may not experience until summertime, when the population increases, is an overabundance of demand for coverage on Proust Neck. And Keith, can you speak to phone usage and phone looks for strongest signal, i.e. OOB?
Sure.
Okay.
I was a teacher, I was a teacher in a form of life. I'm used to asking questions. Let's just keep going, yeah. Good place.
Keith Valenti, Visa Victor ELLA, business address is 65 Dharma Drive and I'm with C Squared Systems on behalf of Verizon's RF Department. So, we, we prepared the RF report that was part of our application, dated January 23rd. And what that does is it kind of just goes into Verizon's network in this area, where their needs are and how the proposed site fills those needs. What Chip showed and explained quite well is sort of the traditional need from a, from a coverage standpoint and, you know, the signal strength in order to have reliable LTE service. Nowadays, with, with the growing usage on wireless networks, it's, you know, everyone's reliant on them, many people have multiple devices. One of the challenges is for the existing facilities to keep up with all that demand. So, in our report, we had a set of five or six maps. Chip showed the first two, and what I have on the display here is the third map. And what this does is it, is it provides sort of a color coding on what each sector of those surrounding sites presently cover. So, we have here in, in red on that Old Orchard Beach site, it's effectively shooting across the water. There's no obstructions, so it's gonna, is to cover and, and blank the western side of Proust Neck. The problem with that is, is there's an abundance of usage within the Old Orchard Beach area that that site is really intended to cover. So, when you have all this, you know, outside usage on the edge of, on the edge of the site's footprint, what we call it, we're talking over three miles away, it's sort of an unintended coverage. And what that does is it draws on the resources and the ability for that site to provide adequate service, not only on Proust Neck, but also closer in than the Old Orchard Beach area. So, as that demand rises, Verizon needs additional facilities, sort of dedicated facility to, to serve the, the area around it. And that's, that's another consideration of how we arrived at, at the proposed location. And again, you know, we have, we're showing other sectors, the Scarborough Three, which is the church, shown in orange and yellow. Those are kind of, you know, spraying down towards the south. The main sector that's, that's covering Proust Neck area is from that Old Orchard Beach Site, I don't want to. So, we go to the next site, next. What we have here is shown in green, and that's what both the proposed site will cover. As you can see, now, that's the dominant site on Proust Neck. Now, we have a dedicated site with three sectors serving usage in that area. It's not just one sector from a far-off distance site providing the service. So, from an overall network standpoint, it not only improves service in the Proust Neck area, but it also enables the surrounding facilities to better serve the areas that they're intended to serve.
In your analysis, did you consider what it would take to expand the sort of coverage to the Higgins Beach area? You're talking about beach areas and we, we have more than one.
Right. So, just to, to step back, one of the, one of the challenges with these coverage areas is, is we can't just turn up the tower or just make the towers much taller and just cover all these areas. The primary reason is one, the capacity issue. We don't want to cover a large area because of all the use you need to kind of contain what they cover. So, those irregular coverage patterns that we've shown on the prior plots, those are largely determined by the topography of the area. Any sort of a, you know, hilltop where you drop off behind, that, that's where you get that sharp cutoff in coverage. So, what we're faced with is directly northeast of our proposed site, we have an elevated hill, and then Higgins Beach is, is down on the backside. So, unfortunately, you know, the sites, we can't cover everything just from one area. And that's why, you know, we need a network of sites to provide a, you know, a large area of uniform coverage. So, we can't get it all from one site. Any attention to this site is Scarborough State Park area, Proust Neck, Black Point Road, and surrounding, you know, residency and business.
I noticed that there's still one little, couple of little areas on Proust Neck that would not be covered even if this site wind goes in. So, are you saying that they're low, high?
Well, are you referring to the, the southern tip of Proust Neck?
Yep. And a couple of small areas.
Sure. And what you can see is that at the southern end, you can have that hilltop. So, again, from, looking south from the proposed site, you're gonna have that sort of drop off as you head towards, towards the water going south. It's not gonna be able to see over that obstruction. On the coverage maps, the first two, we have the green area, you know, that's what Verizon needs to provide, in terms of provide their reliable conservative... needs to provide, to provide their reliable service, the grave service that they're striving to provide to customers. Doesn't necessarily mean that in the white areas, when you get into white, your phone just doesn't work, which is it's not reliable. The day of input is not gonna be what Verizon's trying to provide. And so, we kind of show that on that prior map from, you know, there is some signal there. It's coming from, I think you can see that gray point, I think. Just to make it visually, you know, interpret it, we don't color code every sector, it just becomes a mess. You can see that little gray splash on the southern tip. I believe that's from the Cape Elizabeth II site, again, shooting over the water from far off the site, so. It's, when you get along the shoreline, it becomes challenging with marshes because RF properties are well over these open areas. It's goes over water and it shows up on the other side. So, you get a lot of, you know, popping from one side to the other.
Just as a side note, that explains why the Scotto Hill area has got these two little white spaces. One of those is my house. Just saying. And I have Verizon, but one of those is my house in its little white area. But it's helpful to understand how this, how this works. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I still go?
Absolutely.
So, what private property owners have you talked to? Maybe perhaps in the fire department area? Any, any private property owners at all?
Other than the water?
Like, who might be within that same transmission zone and have the geometry needed in their lot to see if they're willing to have a tower go up further away from the marsh?
No, we always spoke to the water treatment facility.
Okay.
We did so for a couple of reasons. One, it was, again, identified in the town's entry, in your report as a good location. And I would echo that because, again, starting to work within the parameters of the ordinance, 25 acre minimum, 150% height setback.
No, I totally understand that you have geometric configurations that you have to work within. I completely get that, and I think it's a great deal that, you know, my sewer bill will stay low because you're gonna give them a long-term, you know, lease package kind of a thing. I get that, but I'm also trying to be sensitive to the ecological concerns regarding if you could just push it back off the marsh, you'd be less infringing or upon the migratory pathways kind of a thing. So, I guess that's what I was trying to get at, Chip. And with, with all of those things, and I hate to say it and take the economic development outside of Scarborough, but why didn't you go to Ram Island or Cape Elizabeth? Because you could hit the same area from that, from that point that comes down off Cape Elizabeth.
Yeah, one of the points I didn't make clear, maybe Keith can speak to this, but the
Mike. Can somebody come in first?
I'll speak. The site needs to be in the search area, providing coverage out.
So, it can't shoot it across?
Can't shoot it. Well, it is from Old Orchard, right?
Right.
That's what we're doing.
That's what I was trying to mirror on the other side.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, what is the design life for a typical monopole or monopine? What's the design life we're talking about here?
Yeah. Well, it's designed to both by the, yeah, it's, well, designed against the standards of the EIA, TIA, 222G, that's a
Just tell me a year, 20-year, 50-year?
Yeah, 50 years.
50, 50.
Sure.
Because I'm seeing in the, in the peer review that you had, that there is a surety that's required as far as a removal bond kind of a thing. And I'm just trying to allay some, some concerns.
Let's cut right to that, that requirement then. Yes, Verizon Wireless will absolutely post a surety bond in the event that the tower goes un, is it unused, or?
This is an abandonment clause.
That's what I thought, it's an abandonment clause. Yep. We do it with all our sites. And again, another, another one of those cock before the horse kind of conundrums where, are we gonna, our engineer, of course, will provide an estimate, provide to you guys, you can have it reviewed. Typically, it's about $25,000 to remove a site, you know?
And generally, what happens, I mean, I know we haven't gotten to 50 years in cellphone coverage yet.
We're close.
Are we? Okay, we're getting that, well, 1980, whatever.
Yes.
It seems like yesterday. But I guess what I want to speak to is just the sensitivity from the public comment that this will probably remain a cell tower in perpetuity
Yeah.
type of thing.
Yeah.
Okay. And can you talk about what other estuaries you've, like, what's your territory, Chip? Where do you
Maine and New Hampshire.
Maine and New Hampshire, okay.
Yes.
So, you've probably put up similar towers in other estuaries.
Let me think.
Great Bay, Portsmouth?
Scott, help me out here. Bar Harbor.
Okay. But none down in New Hampshire, Massachusetts?
Let me think here.
I'm just thinking of coastal zone management requirements?
Are we, are we concerned about the migratory birds, or?
Yep, that's where I'm headed.
Okay, yeah, again, with regard to migratory birds, I think, I think that what the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service recommends is that if at all possible, do not light the tower. Because again, it's the lighting of the tower.
No, I'm with you. I'm there, and please forgive my terseness. We just have a very full agenda tonight, so I'm not trying to sort of cut you off or anything, but I'm headed in a direction to, to just allay some fears
Sure.
and assuage some public comments here. Talk about your ecological due diligence and what a NEPA means
Sure.
as far as, you know, talking with IF and W and understanding, because migratory bird pathways are impacted by more than just lights. And, you know, I, you know, I'm just a layperson kind of a thing, but can you talk about the ecological process or due diligence that you'll be doing?
Sure. Yeah, once we have a good sense for the, the location, the type and the height of the tower, we'll send our copy of plans to, we have a regulatory department at Verizon Wireless who handles the state and federal permitting for us. Again, when we, when we apply for our NEPA screening, again, National Environmental Policy Act, when we apply for our NEPA, the plans are sent to IF and W, inland fish and wildlife at the state level. It's sent, they're sent to the state historic preservation office. They're also sent to the tribal historic preservation office. And each of those governing agencies reviews our plan to be sure that, for example, we're not going to impact a migratory bird path. And if we do, I've not ever seen it happen, but if we did, they would handle it like the ship office would, for example, and say, if you're going to build it here in an effort to not impact the migratory bird path, we recommend you do this. And then we take steps from there to
So, talk about the timing when that would be, Chip, because, you know, I know that tonight, we're just here talking about a pre-skinch plan type of thing, is if this is where it's going to be. If you get any type of a sureties from us tonight, at what point do you move, you know, and maybe we're not gonna get there tonight, but at what point will we see the ecological slash environmental due diligence?
Typically, it's a four to six month turnaround.
Okay. Yeah. So, it takes a long time, and so there's a lot of due diligence that's involved, but in advance of that, have you pulled any, beginning with habitat maps or anything, just to get a sense of the significant habitat and nesting grounds that are, that is Scarborough marsh?
No, we, no, we have not. We've only done the research on, on the lighting aspect.
Okay.
So
I would encourage you, or Keith, or whoever, just to pull it, to talk, to see just the sheer number of species that we're talking about. And it's not just avian, it's, it's a number of other ones that we're talking about in what is the Scarborough marsh kind of a thing. Some other questions that came up, I think you've identified, why has, you know, what were your other top two sites?
Yeah.
And the duration of the tower, and how will it be dismantled? But let's, you know, one thing that we're doing in town here is comprehensive planning, and we have some, some projects that we know are gonna be phased out over 10, 20 years. So, I am gonna ask you guys to, to think 10 or 20 years out, are cellphone towers gonna be obsolete? Are we gonna be dealing with more satellites? You know, I, I want us to think long-term as far as, you know, the technology that is concerned. Can you guys speak to that at all as far as, you know,
Sure.
the, what is it, obsolescence?
Obsolescence of the industry?
Yeah.
We were speaking jokingly and off the cuff that we're now 30 years into the industry on a terrestrial-based network. There are no signs that I can see that Verizon is gonna choose any other kind of technology other than this terrestrial-based network that we're proposing here. It's considerable expense. And this is one of, one of a couple hundred projects that Verizon's working on just in the New England area alone. Every year, we've got a project base like that. So, we're constantly working to upgrade the network in that regard, so, no, there's no sign of getting away from a terrestrial tower-based network, going to some other satellite or any of those.
Super. Thank you. I, so what other, I guess, you know, in other states, I'm just aware of sort of the loaded question I was asking you too, Chip, and what other estuaries have you worked in?
Sure.
Is, there are some ecological studies that can be done in addition to NEPA type of thing. So, when you know that there are, say, box turtles, endangered box turtles
Sure.
and things like that, you have to do turtle counts and things like that. So, I would ask that you do go back to those, beginning with habitat maps, and see if there are any threatened or endangered species or critical habitats that we need to be doing specific ecological surveys
Sure.
and ecological studies on.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robyn.
Yeah.
Nick? Thank you. So, there's been a lot of good questions already asked, so I hope we won't be too long. But I do want to just kind of reiterate, you know, from my standpoint where this process really, where we are in it, and what we need to accomplish specifically, probably here this evening, if not this evening, the next one. But the first step is, have you proved yourself in need for the coverage? And I think from the data you're showing, it does appear that you proved that this is an area of need. So, that hurdle one, all right, check.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry, no, we're, we're done with public comment for tonight.
So, that, that I feel like you have satisfied to an extent in my mind. Step two is, have you, the location you've selected, is it the best location for this town, for the service area that you identified? That's where I'm having a lot of trouble right now. And, you know, I wanted to know how out of the box you've been with your thinking, and maybe you'll answer some of this on the technical side, but can you obtain the same type of coverage service or service in that coverage area using a network of those stealth cell towers that are on top of telephone poles? If you had multiple locations such as that going around in that area, would you be able to achieve the same coverage?
Yeah, that's a good question. The answer is no, and I'd like Keith to speak to why. Loosely, it's because of line of sight. Again, those antennas, call them small cells, are no different in terms of their effectiveness than an antenna on a tower. They still need to have line of sight to the user. And when you put a small cell on a utility pole, and you're trying to cover a heavily wooded, large residential area, the coverage is immediately inhibited by the trees that are, along which the road runs. Keith, can you, can you dress it up a little bit?
As already mentioned, sort of just in the, think, being mindful of time, I'll just sort of put out there that those type of activities actually were something that was reviewed as part of the process and are explicitly not allowed for in the community. So, that could be a broader discussion about why they are, aren't, but in terms of this board's job in applying the ordinance, I just want to let you know that that's not an option that's available to Verizon at this time, so.
Appreciate that.
For what that's worth.
So, next, follow-up question to that would be the, and I'm referring here to the IDK Communications 2014 study of those locations. And I assume you guys didn't write this, but you're utilizing it in your package material, correct? So, there's a statement here, so the three, there are three Highland Avenue, I'm sorry, of the six locations, there are three that are not feasible for providing additional space for carriers. The three are Highland Ave Fire Station, Black Point Road Fire Station, and Springwood Park. The three wireless facilities at these locations are 90-foot monopoles with antennas located inside the structure. So, you have, so what we established is that the Highland Ave, I'm sorry, is it the Black Point or the Highland?
Black Point.
Black Point.
Well, all three of them
Well, Highland's right at the corner of
Quick, quick, quick background on those. All, all three of those sites are developed by US Cellular and Obama 06. They were, those sites were chosen at the time, 2006, because the ordinance is antiquated. However, because they are deemed a municipal use, they didn't require your, they didn't require your review. So, they, they snuck through under that premise as a municipal use, i.e., the, I think it's the fire station that has a whip, of course, not the Black Point Road one. So, they were able to work under that, that angle. When we came in 2015, we said, gee whiz, we'll wait until you update the ordinance, because it's, we'd wind up with use experience requests all over town.
So, I'm gonna go back to the Black Point Road Fire Station.
Sure.
There's a 90-foot pole in there, and there's no room for any other carrier services, is that correct?
It's not designed, it's correct, yeah, there's no physical space.
So, what are, what are the options, the possibilities? Is it even feasible to replace that existing tower with an expandable tower that's 100 feet tall?
No, because there's no, there's no ground space to do, to add our equipment either.
No ground space? No ground space?
Right. It's not just the physical space in the, you'd have to tear down the pole, you'd have to get town and US Cellular's approval to do so, you have to build up a temporary cell site, then the last of, of course, would be the ground space we need for our antennas, I'm sorry, our radios and our backup generator. And there's no physical ground space on that lot to do it.
That's what prevents you in that location from doing anything else?
Well, it's a tearing down the tower is a fairly insurmountable, insurmountable task.
I don't think it would be that hard. But, I don't know, I don't tear down towers for a living, so. All right. And then you've tried, you know, I, you know, you're in a really prime location there, right on the marsh, and that's, I think that's what I'm really having trouble with, is, you know, just coming to grasp that there really literally is no other spot you could put something that works here.
Well, let's look at the zoning.
And if the answer to that is, really, I mean, that's what it boils down to when we talk about the, the location portion of your hurdles, right? Is this the best location? And if you say that there's literally no other spot you can put a tower that will give you service in that area, that's, that's what I'm, you know, I'm not 100% convinced that all of that has been explored. And maybe I'm the only one sitting on this board that thinks that, but it's just, it's a hard pill to swallow that putting one on the marsh is being the best, the best spot and only spot.
Keith, can you speak to the purpose of the search ring? And the, I think, I think that's where we need to go with this, because
Yeah.
On the one, you've got, if, if, once, before Keith explains the search ring again, once you understand the idea of why the searching was drawn, searching was drawn there, then we look into local zoning, okay? We've got the transmission tower overly district that's established there. There might be two or three parcels in that district that qualify under the town's ordinance. In other words, they're 25 acres in size, you can build the site in a location that meets those setbacks. And they're fairly stringent setbacks, not unlike other communities, but it's a fairly stringent one, 150%, that could be increased to 300%, okay? The site was chosen here, the water was chosen here because, one, it's in the district, two, it's 27 acres, so we meet that, that minimum lot size, three, we can meet the setbacks in that location, and four, it's already, it's a developed use, it's a developed parcel, it's an industrious use. And we felt that our use would sit well, better with that than another, the state park, for example, that's more than 25 acres. Or I think the sprague land is much larger than that, but it's untouched, it's vacant land. So, rather than marring or scarring a lot that's otherwise unused, or more, or held in higher regard, as I would imagine, we opted for the water's treatment plant.
All right, thank you. So, maybe the better way for me to phrase, I mean, you don't have to go much further than what you, we are, you're doing fine, Chip. But what's the backup plan? If we say no to this, where does Verizon go? That's, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that right now.
All right. I've got a lot of words here. And just to, for the public's knowledge, I heard it a couple times, like, you know, the expandable tower, this thing could get higher and higher. And I think hopefully now you can appreciate why this board would probably favor expandable towers, because of the trouble in locating one to begin with, and two, how many towers do you want to see? Or do you want to see 10 extra feet at the top of one that's already existing? So, I hope the public can at least appreciate why the board would come to that conclusion more often than not, including if maybe US Cellular had a different tower in there. A little bit more space, we could use that. Anyways, it's not gonna help us tonight. Couple more. Nope, that got answered. That's it. They've all been answered. Your turn, try to find one, right?
I live across the street from Ocean View Harbor. Been there all my life. Been there all my life. I moved in there when Ocean View Harbor was just a gravel pit. And, we just dumped everything in the gravel pit. It had no value whatsoever. It was the same time in which we sprayed for mosquitoes with DDT. It was the same time in which we put cars and rubber and tires and anything else we wanted to in the marsh because it didn't matter. My grandmother, never mind, that's enough, you get the story. So, along comes Rachel Carson, and she says, DDT, the marsh gets cleaned up. Ducks Unlimited says, oh, boy, there's fish in there, so now there must be ducks in there, and we're going to hunt them. So, now we've got state laws about what you can and can't do with the marsh, and boom, look what we've got. We've got one of the most wonderful resources, certainly in this state, and I swear in all of New England. And, I've fought for 18 years on this board to keep this from happening. This is absolutely improper. It should not be there. If you don't like your cell service, too bad.
Keep your landline.
I just don't get it. But, then again, I'm old, and technology doesn't appeal to me very much. And, I do have a cellphone, and I text and all of that, but if I can't get it from my backyard, I go to my front yard. And, if it's really important, I pick up my landline. Heaven forbid, landline. How crazy is that? I have no sympathy for this whatsoever. I really want to just echo the fact that I want to make sure that the applicant knows that there are all sorts of people who can talk to you about what would happen to all the birds on the marsh if you put that tower in there. Lights, maybe not, but, you know, shall I run down the list? Oh, I would love to run down the list, because I can't find where I put the list, but anyways. The eagle was mentioned, you know, we got, we got, um, waiters, we've got incredible.
Clover.
Pardon me?
Clover.
Clovers, yes. And, of course, they're endangered. Terns, herons, egrets, they all make it their home. Now, I seriously doubt if I'm going to get a chance to say this again, which is why I'm being so pedantic about it, because I don't think that there's anything that we're going to be able to do to keep you from doing this. Because, after all, technology wins, but it's not right. It just isn't. I would like to suggest, and I don't, this thing about, we can't change the towers that we already put in because they were put in, the fire station and the church, when these, correct me if I'm wrong, when the laws were different, because they could be a different size, and now we can't put any else, we can't add any more to those.
Well, what I can sort of talk to about the Black Point flagpole slash tower.
Okay, that's a very large flagpole, yes.
Yeah, so, I think it was already alluded to, is that, when that was approved, that was actually approved as a municipal use.
Right.
Because the.
No, I understand municipal use will do it, yeah.
The town had its service in there. I believe the tower's actually owned by the town with a lease agreement to whoever the provider is, I think.
So, here's my, here's my reason for asking. Poor planning, because we weren't going to need anything more than that. That's sort of like, oh, no, we're not going to have to worry about taking those towers down because we're going to be using the same technology that we're using now 20 years from now. I, I, I don't really believe that. I'm married to an engineer, and, yeah, I'm, I don't really believe that. But, anyway, I have a question. Why is it bad that Old Orchard Signal is coming to, to power its network? Why, why is that a problem? I mean, I really am asking that because I don't understand it.
Sure, sure. It's bad because Old Orchard Beach, that area which, in which that site is intended to, to serve, is, has enough users in the footprint.
And, we're stealing them.
Correct.
Uh-huh, okay. I'm going to stop. I just think that I want to go, underline the fact that it's going and checking with the ecological commissions and committees and departments in the state as soon as you possibly can. If you, if you anticipate that you're going to want to hang around here and make this happen, you're going to want to find out exactly what you can and can't do when it comes to all of the ecology of this area. Personal, please know, what is it called, monopine? This is, this is Maine. You know, we call a dog a dog, and we call a clam a clam, and when, and when you have a tower, it's a tower. And, we're going to put greens on it, and somehow that's going to make it better. That's just personal. I don't get it. But, I do think that you need to educate yourself more than you are right now on what it is that's going down there. And, by the way, because of this, let's assume this happens, if people start to complain about not having any service at Higgins Beach, we're going to have to have another tower, right? Because you can't use this one, and they don't have any other place to go. So, we're going to say to Higgins Beach, I'm sorry, we're not going to give you any more power because we don't have any more towers, because we're not big enough. But, I think this is, I think this is a catch-22, I really do. I understand that there are people who are not getting good service down there. I don't get great service where I am on Black Point Road, but I just don't think it's worth doing this on, on the marsh for people who've got iffy cell service. There was one thing I wanted to say about it, Higgins, I guess I didn't do that. No, I guess I'll have to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Obviously, a lot of great comments and questions already from the public and the board. I'm not trying to add too much to the time we spent on this, although I think it's been useful and necessary and will certainly be continued. I definitely cannot compete with Susan when it comes to tenure in that part of town. I live on the pine, more or on the Pine Point side. I fly fish at Ferry Beach and Pine Point. My kids and I take part in the Martian beach cleanup every year with Audubon. I value that resource as much as, as anybody. And, I share a lot of the concerns about the ecological impact and the viewshed impact. That said, we do have, we do have this ordinance that was developed, I'd say fairly painstakingly. This ordinance includes this overlay district, which the applicant has correctly pointed out. They've sort of followed their, I understand the concerns absolutely, and I share many of them. And, I don't know which way we'll end up going on this, but I will say that we have a process that's in place per this ordinance that sort of steers this. And, so, I think it's a little bit of a, a little bit of a misstatement to say that the applicant or other, or anyone is saying, this is the best site, given, given the, what clearly is a demand for service and the way that our ordinance is set up, this is, and given what I think on balance has been a pretty thorough following of the priority site protocol, this is sort of the least bad site, if you want to put it that way. And, the ordinance, as Jay and others have described, explained, is, really is a balancing act, trying to, you know, the council and others created that ordinance, recognizing that on the one hand, there's growing demand, on the other hand, we have these resources that we want to protect, and we want to be smart about how we direct it. As with a lot of things in town, a lot of the built environment up and down Route One and elsewhere in town, there are things we can all point to that we say, geez, you know, look what happened, look, look at the stuff that happened before we had better planning in place. There's got to be a cutoff at some point, and we're just a little bit past that now, and we're sort of dealing with this first generation of these projects coming through. So, all that's to say that I, you know, I share a lot of the mixed feelings, and I look forward to seeing more of the continued diligence in terms of the visual impact assessment. I would also, I would echo my fellow board members, including Susan and others, encouraging you to really be proactive about looking at the ecological impacts. And, I would suggest and really request that you, to Robin's question, line of questioning about other experience that Verizon has had in other coast, sensitive coastal settings, that you do a little bit of homework there and be prepared to come back and share with us what concerns and solutions were employed in those cases. And, to the extent there are actual sites that people could see, that would be helpful too. You've mentioned the site, you know, Scarborough Four site. I think something that, you know, that might be a little more relevant would be something that's in a somewhat similar coastal setting with some, because, you know, these, these questions come up all the time, and I'm sure that Verizon and others have encountered it in a lot of different environments. So, I guess, you know, I'm, as I think most of my fellow board members are, sort of reserving judgment until we see more.
Sure.
It's a, it's a unique process, it's a challenging process in a lot of ways. I'm sure it's kind of frustrating regardless of where you are in the process. And, as a board, I think we've got maybe two of these under our belt now, so we're, I think, getting better at it, but it's a lot to take in, it's a lot of technical information, the peer review helps. But, you know, we will do our best to continue to digest it all and be thoughtful about it, and trust that you'll be responsive, and we'll see where we go.
Great.
All right. Thank you. All right, we've been at this for over two hours. I'm going to suggest we take about a five-minute break, then we'll come back and we will resume our agenda, and we will see how far we get. As I mentioned earlier, we cannot take up any items after 10:30, so if you're very far down on the agenda, watch the time. Thank you.
So, I couldn't tell whether some of the questions were there. Yeah. I'll have to take it.
The notes from staff also suggest that in a pre-ski- any meeting with main D E P. Include the town engineer. And what was this one? Oh, that's the sidewalk, yeah. I don't think that at this particular point, I mean, to me, this is one of the areas in which it's quite clear, to me, anyway, that the conservation subdivision works best with this piece of land because it leaves some really nice, roomy, open space. So I'll be interested to have more information on, is there going to be an opportunity for people to come in and park their car and be have access to this? Is it going to be held by homeowners association for this particular community? You know, but the use of that open space is something that we'll be looking at further down the road, okay?
Okay.
Right. I think that's all I have to say at the moment. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Nick?
Thank you. So on the sidewalks, typically, I, you know, one of these type of neighborhood deals, I would typically say, I don't think you need a sidewalk. Usually, the traffic is limited to the neighborhood itself and, but where you have two potential interconnections here with maybe future developments, I do think a sidewalk wouldn't be a bad idea. In this instance, it's the way I'm leaning, not that I couldn't be convinced otherwise, but I, I think, you know, I worry about what type of development, how big this development could become down the road and whether or not it becomes a safety issue depending on if that land ever gets developed or what's on the other side of the conservation trust that's not labeled on this map.
Yeah, there are a few classified smaller residential properties. Hanson Road isn't too far. There's probably another two hundred feet.
So what's on the, on the northeast boundary there? Well, I guess it's east, I guess, yeah.
Here?
Be east, yeah.
That's the-
Up there at the top, right?
Yeah, it's the remaining parcel.
So, and?
No.
Right to the top that carries all the way around the corner?
It does.
It does, yeah. So there's a lot of land there.
Yeah, other than, well, the land trust is there as well.
So I think in this instance, I would probably be in favor of a sidewalk. That's what I'm leaning, at least. I don't have a problem with the way Lot One is designed in this. I know it's one of the things that was outlined, that it should be in clumps of three, but I think the way you have it laid out is fine. That's about it for my comments at this point.
Thanks, Nick. I'm gonna go ahead and jump in on a couple of these items just to weigh in. I also would like to see sidewalks, just to sort of the general livability and public safety measure in the neighborhood. I know it sometimes has been a little bit hit or miss, but that's been something that I've generally been trying to promote. It's not quite the same thing as like a Route One sidewalk where we're trying to create a whole network, but this is more of a, more within the neighborhood, so that's where I am on that. Look forward to seeing the wetland delineation. I also would like to see peer review of that, the wetland delineation, vernal pools, and so forth, given the location within the Aquifer Protection Overlay District and some of the other sensitivities. I'm glad to hear that you'll be reaching out to the land trust. And then, as always, with these conservation subdivisions at this stage, I'd just encourage you to make sure you don't see any glaring issues, but just making sure, try to keep the wetlands off of actual house lots. And then, going forward, as we get closer to the actual approval, as Susan kind of alluded to, want to see some evidence of sort of what protections there will be and to sort of H O A regulations or whatever other measures may be taken, including possible hardscaping, just to make sure that we're protecting from infringement on, on any wetland areas that might be close to house lots. So beyond that, I don't really see any, any big issues, and I'll just look forward to seeing the next stage of things. Robin?
Yeah, I think Broad Term Farm is, which you're abutting, that's owned by Scarborough Land Trust, is, is another jewel of Scarborough, quite frankly, and you have a real opportunity there, I think, to make some really meaningful open space in this conservation subdivision. So I'd be looking forward to some real creative use of the open space. I do have a question for staff as far as what the sidewalk, sidewalk design standards might be, or is there opportunity for sort of impervious pavers or things like that to be used for sidewalks, or are they strictly asphaltic or, or the like?
So Angela, I don't know, if you want, why don't you start?
Okay.
It doesn't prohibit them, so I mean, it can be a conversation for the planning board to have, I think, and it can be something that we have a conversation with Public Works if that's the direction we're thinking. And I, I think we're open to looking at all kinds of options.
Okay, so maybe think about some real creative ways to incorporate the sidewalks into that real still rural character in that area. I, I echo what my board members have already said regarding wetland delineation, and before I even looked at staff comments, I thought that there's, might be too many lots proposed here. I think twenty is, is, is kind of pushing it, especially in an Aquifer Overlay District where you're gonna have drilled wells and you're gonna have subsurface wastewater, one next to each on the edge of, and Broad Turn is an organic farm, so, so that's, you know, a, a different question, but I don't know, you just, you got a lot of things going on in the subsurface environment, and I'll be interested to look at your soils tests and the like on, on those, to see where we are on, I guess, the health and the ability of the soils to accommodate as such. Also, with respect to stormwater management, I think we could be a little more creative than wet ponds and underdrain filters and that centralized sort of stormwater management. It might be nice to have buffers and, you know, sort of other, other types of B M Ps that really go with the rural agricultural hair, uh, character out there. So that's what I'll be looking for.
Certainly buffer or something. We would definitely consider.
Cool.
Thanks. Rachel?
I, too, would like to see the sidewalks here, and also to point out that we have run, coming into the, the correct time to take a look at the vernal pools tonight and tomorrow being accepted from that. I'm a little concerned about the wetlands that look as though they're going across what's going to be a road, and I want to take a look at how that is treated. I don't know how I feel about Lot One. It's kind of sitting out there, and it doesn't exactly fit the conservation criteria, conservation subdivision criteria, because it is as separated as it is from the rest. I guess, along with, with the rest of the folks, I, I think this is a good design. I like the interconnectivity, the potential. I got a little confused by your talking about additional land, and I wasn't clear whether it's attached, it, it might be attached, it's what?
It is, it's, so the, the existing parcel is about nine, is about ninety acres, and what Mizzouian Development is acquiring is about half of that. So the remaining land is over in this area over here.
And is there any, so with Mizzouian acquiring that, are there any plans that you can share?
He, he's only acquiring this, this portion for showing on the plan, so this, this half of the land. The, the remaining land is remaining with currently.
What's the name of the stream? Does it, is it named?
It is Silver Brook.
Silver Brook, all right, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Brett?
I don't really have a lot, sorry. I don't really have a lot to add from what, to what everybody else has already said. Where's that future right-of-way go? Is that, is that gonna go over to that next road? That's the only thing, I missed that, sorry.
Which one?
The future right-of-way, that's one of the plans, at the end of the road.
This one right here?
No, the other one. Right-of-way to where?
Right now, right, right now, it doesn't go anywhere. There are, there are a few existing houses on that side that are Hanson Road. I mean, it's really, I guess, just kind of a placehold for any event that something ever needs to get connected through. There's certainly no, you know, intent from developers to realize that at this point.
Right, okay. Yeah, 'cause it actually looks like, it looks like it crosses right over that Silver Brook, which, yeah, I mean, the-
I think, I think Silver Brook has a crossing along Hanson Road, I believe.
Yeah, I don't really have anything, everything they said, especially Robin.
So just to quickly recap, we'll look forward to the wetland delineation, which will be peer reviewed, seems to be a strong majority in favor of sidewalks, so basically opposing the waiver of the sidewalk requirement. We'll see where the land trust discussion goes, all the other things we've talked about. Is there anything, anything else you need from us at this point in terms of feedback?
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing, and I don't know if I can get clear direction on it yet, but it's the, the lane widths that we might be looking for. I talked to Angela a little bit about this, and I think if, you know, on, on one side of the road, there's a sidewalk in curve, then we certainly would want to, must still allow it to be on that lane, and I assume probably the same on the other side. It just has an impact on how we design stormwater. So just trying to get a sense of what, what that road section should be.
I would say, and others can chime in, and I'd certainly welcome any comment from Angela, the board's generally been fairly flexible on lane width in these types of developments, based on different constraints and just the character of them, but-
Yeah, Drew, I mean, I guess my, my guidance Steve was really looking at, like you said, I know the board has been open to reducing the lane widths in, in a rural setting where you have shoulders and ditch, we, you can go down to as, as little as ten-foot lanes, so that's a twenty-foot section, but I know in areas where we talk about, the cross-section actually shows, as Steve alluded to, the cross-section shows a curb inside, an Eskimo sidewalk on one side, and when you start introducing the curb, Public Works likes to see eleven-foot lanes. That's been an issue for them with some of these more narrow, but it's really when you have that obstruction. So that's, that's their comfortable level, I think, is eleven foot. But I think in a rural setting, when it's wide open and shoulders, ten foot works. So it's really about how you design it, too, so.
Okay.
I know that wasn't the direction you wanted, but it's ten or eleven, how's that?
I think we, I think we generally have amended here for sidewalks at this point, so-
Yep.
Given that-
But you can do sidewalks in different ways, too.
That's right.
I mean, you can do, you can still do a ditch, and you can have an offset sidewalk that kind of meanders through, which is actually sometimes a lot more pleasing for the neighborhood.
So we'll let you do some study on that, but I think it's, I think it's fair to say we'd, we'd be willing to entertain narrow lane width, given, you know, depending on how the design works out and, yeah.
Yeah. I apologize if these questions are premature, just trying to get-
No, that's okay. This is the time to put all that stuff out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Corey, if I might, just sort of recognizing that, I don't think it was quite clear, at least not in my mind, maybe others, the, the connection to this property, to the abutting forty or fifty acres that are remaining, I think we want to be very mindful of where the future right-of-way lines direct us in terms of the other property. If the property owner's willing to sell off forty-five acres for development now, who knows what the future will hold? Maybe they'll hold on to it, and it won't be developed, but there's also opportunity for future development. So I think we'll want to explore, as this moves forward, the opportunities and constraints on that remaining land, and really be sure we're locating this sort of right-of-way tag in the right place. Right now, it's sort of right where the land trust land and the abutting property come. And I understand you just sort of extended the dead end, get that, but, so, I just sort of echo, or put that out there for consideration if the board thinks that's a good idea, that we can work with the applicant on that, otherwise I'll be quiet.
Does that mean we should probably look at what's on the other side of that line? I mean, is there a natural feature on the other side of that property line that-
The, we included a copy, released an excerpt of the assessment, the application, and that might kind of show the area a little bit better. It's the first of that sketch plan. The next one.
Yep.
That's, that's the catch, I think the next one's a little bit more clear.
Okay. Let's zoom back out.
So, so the, the blue outline is the forty-five acres.
Wrong, sorry, guys.
The last one was. So the blue outline is the four, is the forty-five acres that Mizzouian Development is, is under contract for, and then you can kind of see the remaining parcel, yeah, there you go. It's, it's like, so Silver Brook does bisect that abutting parcel to the west.
So Jay, now that we have this in front of us-
Yeah.
-sort of recapping what the, the issue you're, you're highlighting.
Sure, I mean, I think this Trapper John subdivision is a good example. Maybe had there been left a fifty-foot wide right-of-way connecting to this property, you know, whenever years ago that was developed, that could have been an opportunity for interconnection. So, you know, just being sure, right now, I think what they're showing is a connection in the location where I'm putting the mouse, if anyone can see that up there. Maybe that's entirely the appropriate location, but, you know, I think it's just worth exploring, at least at a high level, what are the natural constraints and opportunities on this property. I mean, I think, looking at this map, seems like there's probably limited ability for a future connection, given, as you just said, with, with the stream sort of on the backside, but, you know, maybe it's worth looking at, but just really thinking about the connection with that remaining land.
Thanks.
I'd like to, I'd like to just go on record, just agree with you on that, and if the stream, if the back part that, where the stream is, impacts that, well, it'll be wetland anyway, so it probably wouldn't be developable where, right, so-
You want to go with that end?
Well, no, I'm thinking that having that, because it really was not anything I would have thought of, but when you brought up the fact that there was another piece of land that's almost as big as this one, that the space is probably going to be developed. Interconnectivity seems to be really important to me, and I don't know, complete streets doesn't come into this, does it? I mean, we're, we're trying not to have dead-end streets.
So Angela, I don't know if you want to touch on complete streets, but I think complete streets means different things in different contexts, and so, what?
I think it, I think any opportunity we have, we can look at complete streets. I mean, that's what we just talked about. We talked about the sidewalk and where it's going, you talk about street tree, all of that stuff, it becomes part of the complete street network, so, and that interconnection plays into it, so.
Just something to keep in mind, because it's one, it's one of the ways that, that the town is trying to go, in the direction of connectivity.
And I would also just add, that we've seen many times that streams and brooks don't prohibit development across, and, or even wetlands for that matter, so I guess I wouldn't discount any connection on the other side either. It's probably less critical where that slides than what Jay's talking about, the other side, because I think you're, you're gonna, you're gonna cross it no matter what, so that, that line, along that line doesn't seem as, as critical to nail down as, as the other side that Jay pointed out.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would appreciate the input, looking at that as well, and I know, I know sometimes the tough reality of it is there's sometimes a tension between what, what we want as planners and what maybe sells. People tend to like to live at the end of dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs. I don't know whether that's a, you know, something that the developer is thinking about, but I think there are, there's a lot to be said for connectivity in terms of just a neighborhood, neighborhood feel as well as overall traffic movement and public safety and other factors, so, I guess, take, take another look at that. I don't know if other board members have any other thoughts on that. All right? Thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
All right, item number seven. Sun and Shine Realty LLC, Portland Volvo, requests a sketch plan review for a new automobile dealership at Nine U S Route One, assessors map U fifty, Lot eighteen.
Again, all right. All right, so as you said, the applicant's in front of the board for a sketch plan for a new building for the Portland Volvo dealership. We're featured at Nine U S Route One, near the South Portland border. It is in the B O R zoning district, and it is the only zoning district in town that allows for automobile sales and service facilities, given they were in existence prior to two thousand and seven. As you guys are well aware, typically automobile sales and repair businesses require a contract zoning process through with town council and, and the planning board. So moving along to some of the issues, there, this zone does require a twenty-five-foot buffer strip, including landscaping, that's required on any property with Route One frontage. Parking lots should also be located to the rear and sides of the buildings per zoning and design standards. The applicant did provide an initial building design with this submission, and the building design will definitely be a big part of the review process, along with the site layout, including building materials and how the building interacts with the street. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Janelle? I'll turn over to Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, my name is Sean, and I'm the project head. With me tonight is Dale Ely, I represent the board. And we just thought this was an appropriate time to bring this project in front of the board. Obviously, we appreciate your feedback in terms of the, the overall site layout we're talking about here, as well as the building itself. Does this one still work?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm glad it was a little better. So just to get a little oriented real quickly, it's the Portland Volvo site, I think we're all very familiar with it, obviously coming Route One, self-owned, off of South Portland. The first main building, it's approximately fifteen thousand square foot, single-story building here now. It's been there for a while, we'll just over some additions over the last twenty years or so. As part of that, as we've been adding on, so obviously we have the vehicle display area associated with that. It's now at the time, obviously, when you have dealerships, there's always certain upgrades that have to go with the buildings associated with that, and Portland Volvo's been working with the applicant in terms of their requirements. What we're proposing, if you will, is to construct a new twenty-five thousand plus-minus square foot building in this location over here, and once we have this up and running, the existing facility would be removed in that area to utilize for the additional display and parking area. We have shown, you know, a driveway across the front of the building, with some display along the front. I picked up Janelle's comment in terms of the twenty-five-foot buffer. The previous had required this fifteen feet, so we did have a fifteen-foot buffer along this edge. We would like to maintain that fifteen feet, I don't know if that's possible, along that existing edge of pavement, if you will, and, and propose a twenty-five foot along the front of the building in this area here, again, something we're excited to discuss with the board. Utilities obviously are all onsite, associated with the existing facility, will be extended to service to the, the new development. Stormwater management is going to be obviously a crucial part of this whole thing, associated with how we're treating that. This does have a stormwater permit. I don't know, I think I knew that when we actually got together last time. And we've also modified that, it was actually old T S S-based designs, we actually have a bore technics unit in this location here, which will obviously be removed. Sort of think there may be some type of, you know, treatment facility associated with treatment of wetland in the barns, tree in the barns type of thing, perhaps a small drainage pond in this area here, as well as a reference to the existing pond within this area. So again, here's the general site layout, one of the big aspects we had discussed with staff, there's currently three driveways serviced in the facility, we're proposing to maintain two of them, we'll close up this once the building's actually constructed, we will close this driveway down to the vehicle, we have the two driveways in this location. We are proposing to maintain the existing locations of those driveways in the current event, you know, U S Route One was just recently deconstructed, so it's only our intent is to minimize any type of, of work within U S Route One area. As Janelle stated, we have an architect husband on board. Again, we're working through the Volvo dealership, associated with their design requirements. Their first proposal had been pretty much the same type of building, if you will, of a single story. We had come in and seen staff a little bit to discuss, you know, adding some types of features to the, to the, to the building as part of that, you know, heavy work in terms of providing, you know, peaked roofs and some type of roof dimensions associated with closed facility out there. This is metal channels, illuminated up within the front and the roof as well. Obviously, as I was looking at, basically, excuse me, we're looking at perspectives of the buildings from both sides of Route One, and just kind of giving an overall perspective of the building after we have it, looking, having a lot of the service area on one side, in the actual dealership, if you will, with the new vehicles and the display areas on the other side. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we are here for sketch plan, and we thought it was important to get the boys in front, if we're going to work the development proposals at this point in time, so we can move forward again through D E P's design process, as well as the town. So we've got a complete consultation, so we'll be out there.
Thank you. I appreciate the efficient overview.
Yeah.
Robin?
Wow. Okay. Definitely appreciate the, short and to the point, Sean, thank you. So you mentioned retrofitting the existing stormwater basin that's there, the one on the far right-hand side of the, of the site plan? You said that one was an old, like, said basin designed for T S S.
I think this is really, this was a small detention basin, I think, that's really it, right down in the corner, so someone I thought was an underdrain pond associated with that, perhaps, so we should provide a treatment for that one off there, and that actually picks up this, a, a basin in the low spot right here, which actually feeds down to here as well, so it's picked up, you know, that area as well as that driveway area.
So there's not going to be any, is there going to be any regrading of the parking lots at all?
Yes, there will be, yes. Specifically, all are associated with the, with the new building base.
So that sort of like auxiliary parking lot will probably remain as is, then?
To a certain degree, I would show some additional parking, but I'm gonna revisit that, to be honest with you, it almost seems like we're doing a lot of work for very little pay.
Yeah, and I, hmm, you're so, you're so close to, what is it, the non-such back there?
Yeah, this is, this is the big cul-de-sac across Under Route One right here. I don't know if this has a name, it's a trip, it comes down to Old Mill Pond, it's used to be dammed, I think the dam is still pretty much there, and that does flow down to the non-such, yes.
Ah, yeah, so, yeah, you're real, you're really hemmed in there as far as real estate is concerned and what you can do for stormwater, huh?
We are.
Could you, could you ever, could you grade it toward the, the grass so that you can get some, so it's not so centralized, Sean?
They did have a wooded buffer here originally, that was part of the overall design, was being, and that'll be pretty much maintained, but my thought is, is I don't think that'll meet today's standards just because of the slope, if you prefer. If you just look at the topography we have here, I think if I look at today's standards for what a wooded buffer requires in terms of, you begin with the sheet floor, the woods, I'm just afraid that that's, even though it'll pretty much remain there, I'm just afraid we're not going to get much benefit of it from an actual stormwater treatment stand.
Have you thought about underground storage or anything like that?
Yeah, we have, yes, and that may be something, you know, that may be, it may become a missed shelf.
Yeah, especially if, if you're taking out the bore technics unit, but not necessarily replacing it with anything, you're just gonna incorporate whatever the bore technics was doing into your overall design.
Yes, and again, I thought was, and let's face it, it's really doing as not much of anything at this point in time, but I thought was certainly, at least in terms of perhaps the roof, you know, this- the roof, in this low spot here on the back, I suddenly see this driveway in the back coming to a low spot. Again, maybe, we've had a lot of, you know, the wetlands, the tree in the box type of thing associated with that.
Sure. Now, talk to me about the front, you said you wanted to try to keep it 15 feet instead of 25 feet?
Well, we have existing pavement out on, so, you know, we were hoping not to get in, like you say, in terms of the grading, but we're certainly going to be doing some out through here, we're trying to maintain as much of this pavement in this current configuration as we can. This is the edge of pavement out through here and now, so we were hoping if we could maintain that line. Again, we could totally heavily lean that. Again, I mean, that's an option, I certainly haven't mentioned to staff.
Or turn it into a rain garden?
Well.
Ah. Anyway, that's really all I had, Sean, was just to sort of test you on the stormwater, so you're looking good.
And again, I understand stormwater is the key, but obviously, like you say, the site is pretty much rated as it is now away from Route One, so I think we will be limited to a certain degree in terms of solar configuration.
All right. Thank you for your short notes, that's great.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, I, I'm not that familiar with the site, Sean, what's on either side of it?
There's a small road that goes down, it's a little dead-end road, so there's a few residential homes heading through here, and this, I believe, that's a hotel off the top of my head, that's a good question, Lloyd, what else? This is actually in the same zone, I've shown that in our two, and that was a good point.
It's a redemption center.
The redemption?
Isn't that where the redemption center is?
I think it's a little further down, that's over the South Portland line.
It's in South Portland.
It's over the, that's over the South Portland line.
I think.
Yeah, it's not quite there.
Yeah, we're not quite there yet.
Yeah.
All right, I think I was just concerned with the amount of buffering between the budding sites.
This has a nice buffering there now, it's actually some pretty good evergreens associated with that, and so we'll continue that down in through there. You're right, what's here now is what is here, but this is, again, I, you know, I was remiss, there is not a zone line, we have the BOR zone, actually doesn't extend into that property as well.
All right, the.
We'll be dealing with, if I can make what's open on that one.
I guess, I have, okay, I have a concern about the amount of buffering on the street on Route One, and would like to see the full 25 feet there, and I, then, as I say that, I know that might provide a crunch in terms of vehicle display, another 10 feet taken up, but. The thing about a car dealership is, you have to have lots and lots of cars. At the same time, all of that pavement isn't visually, I guess, in keeping of what we're trying, of what we think of Scarborough, in terms of parking areas with trees and with the divisions. So I'm trying, just trying to think of how to break up some of that parking area, how to screen some of it. I don't know enough to tell you what to do on that, but I think that I would like to see that, that screen and that buffering along Route One.
I appreciate that. I will just say is, again, obviously, that's, again, I'm always in the balance, and that's what balancing act I'm always trying to do is, of course, my client wants to display vehicles, and he wants people to be able to see those vehicles going by, his client wants to have, you know, aesthetically pleasing visual as they ride along the road. And again, I don't think that they have to be mutually exclusive, or hopefully we can still actually see the facility and see the vehicle, but at the same time provide a nice buffering, if you will.
Yeah, and I'd like to see something, if you can come up with something creative or imaginative that meets the interests of both of us, of the town and your client, I think, I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. Rick?
How much of the, I just have a couple of questions. The, all the parking area that there's now, all the pavement that there's now, you don't have a before and after shot on, I think you have it here, this is before and this is after, is that what I'm looking at?
Uh, yes.
So you're really only increasing the pavement very slightly?
Correct.
Over the corner? Okay.
The main point would be here and actually right along the back.
Yeah. So it's essentially the same footprint?
Certainly, you're going to have something, a bit more pavement associated with it, not a great deal. Again, the main point really was to allow access along the rear of the building, and we were under pressure, that's where I offered a lot of the front, but, you know, that will be sliding back, obviously, to a certain degree, so that front pavement, so you're right, that's actually kind of happened as well.
Okay. Yeah, I think the pond gets close, stormwater's going to be your toughest challenge, but it always seems to be one of the toughest challenges, so I'm sure we'll figure that out.
Thanks. Nick? Sure, I don't have a whole lot.
I do, I am curious about, you're getting rid of one of the three drives, is there a reason you wanted the two?
Yeah, just from circulation, and obviously, the same type of thing as if, you know, your, something to unload the vehicles and that type of thing, there might be some type of infrastructure associated with it. What we really want to maintain is that, that main drive. Unimpeded, if you will, you know, for access to the service area here, and we treat this, if you will, more as, you know, kind of like what we use on this board, is in terms of, you know, the facilities of the vehicles, the most types of things to get in and out of this area back, and here provides a good circulation route for us as well, rather than just try to maintain all that work, just on the one five.
And then, I agree that the buffers, you know, you should keep in line with the buffers of the zoning. I don't have a whole lot else to add on this. Architecturally, you know, it's another dealership, is what it looks like, and.
I'd love to argue the point with you, but it's one deal. I do think, like I said, I think the next step, if you will, to add something, at least in terms of the roof aside, when we first came in, I mean, you know, I think Jay kind of just looked at it and said, no, because it's basically a single-story, flat roof, structure, you know, that whole thing, it leaves obviously the, the facade and the window lazy associated with that, so I'm hopeful, at least, the board will appreciate the fact that they did put that next step, if you will, to at least add, you know, some type of roof geometry associated with it, to try to provide some type of.
Hopefully, instead of just no, I pointed out the standards of the town and how those were to be applied.
Yeah, they always have.
Sean's trying to be very economical with his words.
That's probably what it sounded like, but.
Jay, always realize specifically, Paul, you're, I won't say that.
I think that's it, I'm all set at this point.
Thanks. Susan?
First, I think if you're looking at the Volvo service now, and you go north towards South Portland, there's a bunch of manufactured housing in there.
Correct.
The entrance is off South Portland, but they're actually in Scarborough, so that's.
On the other side, right, you would actually have it on the other side of that middle pond, if you will.
There you go, because we couldn't figure out what was down there, well, that's.
No, I think it's the next one, I don't.
It is the next one.
It's that building right there, Susan, to be honest with you, I'm not quite sure, I don't think that's part, I don't think it's part of the manufactured housing.
She's got an, her room.
Driving.
She's driving.
Looks like a house.
I think it's a little house.
Is that a motel?
Okay, never mind, on the other side, it's a motel?
It's beyond it, yeah.
You're beyond it, okay, on the other side, it's a dirt road.
Correct.
Anyway, I don't have any problems with flipping it like that, in fact, I think I like it better. I would like to suggest that there are ways, I am not educated on them, but there are ways that you can have really nice landscaping and see cars. So I would like to see islands, landscaping islands in, the cars are going to be coming together, like, these islands, the cars are going to be facing each other supposedly.
Yes.
Something that goes down the middle, that creates like a walkway, the trees.
I wonder if you stick it on Route One front, if you were talking about, Susan. The interior islands from a car dealership, as you can imagine, I mean, again, it's not like an office building or something else, where, you know, everyone leaves at the end of the night, so you can go and you can park.
This is, this is an entrance into Scarborough.
It certainly is.
It is a gateway into Scarborough. Hmm? Yes, it's a gateway into Scarborough, and I think that some kind of an attempt can be made to do some kind of landscaping in that great big sea of cars. Now, on the other side, where the cars now sit, it's interesting, because if I remember, I haven't been out there in a while, but the land kind of slopes, doesn't it, Route One down?
Yes.
Which actually helps in terms of buffering the parking. And if the landscaping along Route One had been a little more creative, it would be really quite nice. It's, it's in the right, it's heading in the right direction. But this side of it is going to be flat, it's not going to have that advantage of it going down, so it's going to be kind of create some kind, something can be done, I know it can be done, and I'm not going to try to do it tonight, but I'm taken with the phrase streetscape. This building, the new building, is it closer to Route One than the other building was?
Yeah.
I can't tell whether.
Slightly, yes.
Slightly?
Yes.
Okay, and it's, can't be, if the architecture, as you've shown it, is, has nothing to do with being a streetscape, it's just a big square building, all white, with, I can't tell what's going on there, but it, not much, are there any windows? Are there any windows?
There's all the display windows along the front.
What am I looking at?
A display, 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 and then regular windows off to the side, on the other side of the working site. Looking at, we've got display windows, display windows, this is the canopy we're looking at here in the corner, again, with the windows, and then going down the side, again, that's kind of the, the work inside is, you know, more the office windows.
I think the reason I'm getting confused is that I can't, all right, I'm looking at this sheet here, okay, where it's at, one, two, three, four, we don't have it up here.
I don't, really, I don't. I do think if you're looking at.
The top one?
You know, the property, they have their front, east front elevation, north.
The top drawing?
Yes.
Is from Route One, am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and to the far right of that are service base.
That's correct.
And then there's this big Volvo sign, are those windows that are underneath the Volvo sign?
Yes, they are.
They are. Okay, and then, on the, I don't see, what is that? Anyway, if I go further to the left, there are windows, I don't know, I can't tell what is windows and what is architectural detail. There's a doorway there.
There's a doorway with glass.
Yeah, and then to the left of that.
And further up, underneath the Portland, if you're looking at it, there's a glass underneath there as well.
So between the door and where it says Portland, what's that?
Between the door and where it says Portland, that's, that's the metal panels.
That's what?
The metal panels.
That's metal panels?
Yes.
And up above is metal panels?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, this is, this is when you get to the point of showing us materials, this is going to be broken up somehow? That's one big?
Yes, yeah, and again, I think in terms of, I mean, you're looking at it right now on that top sheet as one, and that's the whole point, you know, that's the confusing part sometimes with the elevations, it all shows as one line, if you will. I think that's in terms of the site plan, and in terms of the perspective, what's trying to show it is that it is definitely.
I'm not going to make a big deal of it now, but one of the problems that I have as a board member is indeed getting a really good sense of perspective, and I could give you three or four examples of where I thought I got it, but it really wasn't what I thought I was going to get at all. So somehow or another, this is going to be made a little clearer in terms of what was actually happening in front of that building. Again, it's got a little bump out, but I'm looking at, you know, how do the materials work with each other, is it just one big, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, Susan, we'll certainly have an architect, the architect, we have, they have architects beginning on board, and certainly having architects.
But I don't always trust them. Okay. If you're looking at the fronts, from the front again, to the little thingy parking area that's up to the right.
Yes.
What are those little things that are sticking out?
There's a canopy over through there.
There's a canopy?
Again, if you look at it, when I say it's a covered canopy for the display vehicle way here.
Is that what that is up above? Here, your little.
So it sounds like we need some better detailed architectures for next time, and some, and some material samples.
Oh, I'm sorry, those are that.
Show right here.
I thought we were still on the building plan. Yep. This was, and I think Robin and I talked about this, this where I was trying to gain a few more spaces, but I'm thinking that maybe, you know, we may be doing a lot of work and on an awful lot of gain, so I will take a hard look at that. Yes, I was showing some additional spaces up there, not.
What I think you're seeing there, Susan, is existing parking and proposed parking sort of all overlaid, so.
No wonder I'm a little confused, right? Okay. I love the idea of rain gardens, yes. I would, I would really like to have a 15-foot buffer, but I'll trade it for rain garden. What is that thing on the front where the, between the two entrances, it's got a little square box?
That's the existing sign.
It's a sign?
Yes.
Ah, of course it is, it's signage, right, and you're going to try to keep the same signage if I were you.
Yes, we are, that is the sign, proposed, maybe, thank you.
And I, I really so appreciate the fact that we're going to try to do something a little creative with the, with the waste water, not waste water, which in stormwater management, I don't know anything about it, but of course, I don't have to.
Well, I will certainly, I have a project manager from DEP now assigned, and as soon as I have a pre-construction, I mean, a pre-application meeting, I will certainly invite Angela to join us if, if.
Andrea?
Can I just, she was actually pointing not the sign, she was pointing on the other side of the driveway. There's a, there's like, looks like concrete or something, and a square box.
It's like a kitchen sink.
Not between the two driveways, on the other side, in front of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are, those are some vehicle display areas, some of them are concrete and.
Vehicle.
Yes.
Vehicle display areas.
Yes.
Well landscaped, I hope.
Obviously, yes.
I think that this really, I'm joking about it, but this is where the tension comes with a, with a automobile dealership. Of course, they want us to see the cars, but on the other hand, they're sitting right on Route One, and this is an entrance, a major entrance into Scarborough. I don't think it's necessary to have a car sitting there, you know, 15 feet away from the frigging road. Show us how it can look attractive and I'll change my mind. This is an opportunity to do something a little more creative, because we're starting with a whole new building, and not that I don't think the old building was okay, but, you know, okay, we have better than okay. I don't know, I'll just look forward to seeing what comes up next, and I'm all about design, and I really do think that without going into a great deal of detail, there is something that can be done to see how you can put some landscaping in a parking area where there are cars.
We'll take a look at that.
Please do. I appreciate your willingness to try, thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, some of this, including the landscaping, has been kind of a recurring theme, I don't know what kind of an economic indicator it is that we seem to be having every dealership either redeveloping or locating in Scarborough right now, but we had a similar conversation around landscaping at another gateway into Scarborough the other night, discussing first stage of a possible contract zone for another dealership, and I just echo what Susan and others have said, that, you know, we totally get that your client wants, wants people to be able to see the product, and it is a dealership, but we just look for some creative landscaping and some, you know, some different approaches to respect that, and I'd like to try to see the 25-foot buffer, if that can be incorporated, given, given the other constraints. Appreciate the responsiveness to the feedback on the design, particularly understanding that, as with any kind of, you know, franchise, if you will, of a national brand, there are certain preferences and standards and kind of out-of-the-box designs that are probably the path of least resistance from their perspective, so we appreciate that responsiveness to our, our standards and our, our preferences. One quick question, can you just confirm that in terms of the, it looks like it, but in terms of the internal circulation, that you'll be able to get the big car carrier trailers into, all the way into the site?
Yes, and again, I know Janelle, one of his comments was, well, is to show the forty-four land truck, which of course works out well for our, for our carrier as well, trying to provide that to make sure the vehicle can get around.
Okay, great, you'll be doing the auto turn simulation, obviously.
Yes.
And buffering stormwater has been, been well discussed. Um, and buffering stormwater has been, been well discussed, so I think that's all we have for you. Do you need anything, anything else from us at this point for sketch?
No, I agree with you, and again, that was our whole point, obviously coming to see folks, and so I appreciate the feedback.
Miscus.
And I did miss some...
All right. Thank you. So, we're going to move on. I want to be very upfront, uh, we're going to get to one more item tonight, and that's the next item, number eight on the agenda. We can't take anything up, anything new up after 10:30. I do apologize to those we're not going to get to tonight. Appreciate your patience and understanding, and we'll get you right into the queue for the next agenda. Um, that said, number eight is Blackpoint Holdings LLC requests a site plan review for a new multi-tenant building at 20 Blackpoint Road, assessors map U43, Lot 11. Which one of you would be interested in this?
I think, uh, we have Jamel teed up to keep this one off for us.
All right, take it away.
All right, just in time. Um, so like you said, it's a site plan review for 20 Blackpoint Road, or at 20 Blackpoint Road. It is in the T B C two district, and, uh, these folks are back in front of the board for a third meeting. At the last meeting, uh, there were three primary issues that were discussed, uh, traffic and site access, buffering from neighboring properties, and the overall stormwater approach on the site. Uh, it's, the board seemed generally comfortable with traffic and site access at the last meeting, um, so we won't, I won't touch on that today. But as a result of the public and board's feedback at the last meeting, the applicant has eliminated six parking spaces in the easterly parking field, and has replaced those spaces with additional plantings, um, to provide more buffering to the neighboring properties. Uh, the applicant did resubmit a revised set of plans on Friday afternoon, um, but staff in the board hasn't had a chance to review these materials. Uh, so now I'll turn it over to Angela for her comments on stormwater.
Thanks.
As Jamel said, obviously, six spaces being on, um, makes an impact on the overall impervious surface on the site. However, there wasn't really any additional, I guess, information for stormwater management report, any update with that. Obviously, any decrease is a bonus, and will decrease the flow off the site, as we talked about, adding the buffer and trees and vegetation is only going to help with that process. But, um, it left a, a pretty odd layout and configuration, which staff had comments about, um, and how that would, how that would function in the winter months, and again, like Jamel had stated, um, I'm sure probably in that packet, there's some conversation about addressing those concerns and the layout that's left of the stormwater management system. It's kind of like a, a remnant of what used to be there. Um, and so having a basin off the pavement now, or was connected by a strip of pavement, was just, um, it, we had concerns about it functioning, actually, when you're pushing snow up off the parking lot and things like that. So, again, have not had time to look at any updated stormwater, um, layout, so, um, I can probably speak to what was submitted, but, um, other than that, I can chime in as needed with questions.
Okay. Thank you. Rocky?
Good evening. Um, Rocky Richbarra here, representing, uh, Blackpoint Holdings. Um, Nancy St. Clair prepared, uh, some nice answers to all of the staff comments. I suppose I could take the time to announce whoever I want, but I think we must so that we really need to, um, at this point. I felt like we were pretty close at the last meeting, uh, getting satisfied with most of the board's requirements and questions, uh, specifically about traffic, and, and at that meeting, we talked about the impervious area and, and had some back and forth on, uh, you know, what could happen, uh, if we eliminated those six parking spots. So, in fact, we did, had, Nancy did modify the plans, they came back to the town, uh, with modifications, but it was Friday, and Angela hasn't had the time to, to reassess those. But basically, I feel like it's something that if the board wanted to give approval tonight, that Angela could maybe sign off on it in the end. We've come up with a, in a way, to answer questions, but for the board's purposes, we've changed nothing about the storm drainage system from the plans that you've seen and from what's been reviewed by the town. All we did was eliminate the six parking spaces, and, uh, in, in order to answer Angela's concerns from last, last week, um, we added one catch basin, so that the, the storm drainage system still be sizable and could handle the water as if those six additional spaces were there. Uh, we've just come up with a way to, to, to make it easy and, and handle that. So, I think that, uh, you know, we've worked on something, we could work through with staff, and we felt that way. Um, just kind of hitting on the high points, I think that's, that's probably the big drainage one. I have Keith Smith here, I think we've been talking about the landscaping, and I could have him give you a presentation on that, if you, if you wish to hear it. Uh, but basically, in a nutshell, uh, by eliminating those six spaces, we were able to add some landscaping and pull some landscaping off the hill, so that it's going to give a better buffer area, uh, for the neighbors. In addition to that, in relooking at the, um, now with all those spaces, in relooking at the lighting, we were able to shift, uh, some lights around a little bit, and he's got a detailed plan, you know, that shows it, but it allows us to eliminate one whole light in, in the parking lot, so if, if, again, pull the, pull the light pole back, and he can give us the detail if you'd like to hear it. But, uh, so that was, that was an important issue and a good benefit to come up with and talk about. Um, plenty of things that the staff had on the comments I think we should, should touch on. Here the P O from Garland, Turgeon was here, and he's talked about the building, I think the door was generally satisfied with the building. We do have some samples, but it's tonight, we're just seeing, uh, what, what those might look like, but basically, we're looking at is a, is a white-on-white siding finishes with gray stone, uh, accents, and a, a basically black roof. Will be, uh, an asphalt shingle, but it'll be an architectural-style shingle, so we, uh, not just doing high-quality black. Uh, the color is actually called Lori Black, which is a kind of two-tone black, so it's not like a deep, really dark black, you know, a nice, uh, it's got a nice feeling to it. Um, and I think we satisfied the traffic issues the staff had brought up. One of the things that we got of the traffic issues the staff had brought up, I hope, uh, to put on the plan, the gadding, medical use. Uh, Nancy, actually, we, we talked about this quite a bit, and Nancy has come up with a, with a thought on that. We're concerned about, if, if there's just a note on the plan that says the huge tenant must be a medical use, that that's going to be a little cumbersome, and I think that, what we'd rather see that, that note say, uh, is basically that if the use that we proposed within there would generate more trips than what Bill has calculated in his, his trip generation report, then we would have to come back to the board. That would just save a, a step. Uh, in, in general, I think it's probably going to be about the type of use that we come up with, uh, for, for the end user, but I think that we should talk more about that, that note to be added to the plan. Uh, I'm not sure if I covered everything, but I think that'd be the high points. If you have any questions.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I think we'll, we'll see what questions are still out there, and can get into more detail in certain areas as needed. Um, I do want to give the opportunity for public comment if there is anyone here who is interested. All right? Okay. Um, so, put it up for grabs. Who wants to go first? Rachel.
Um, Rocky, uh, thank you for accommodating us with those six spaces. Um, one of the things that I had asked about was, uh, the ability to do some, some sort of striping so that we don't have as much of a dead end to it on the side of the building, that cars can actually turn around or find a place to turn around? Um, and I don't see that. Is that on the plans, or...
So, we actually talked about that amongst ourselves, and, and I thought when you were talking about that specifically, we were talking about the, the larger parking lot that could be, uh, on the Route One side of the building, if you will. And I thought that, you know, we've got a couple places there that are all striped out, that part of the handicap parking that someone could back into. And we could add one more strike-off area, it would be, it would be a loss of another space to us. Uh, that's, that's something that we could add.
Yeah, I, I, and I, I note that you did that on the, on the larger area, but we still have the potential for people backing up at least seven spaces.
Well, again, we could, you know, we could strike one off, uh, it's, it's a loss of another space. I think it's pretty common to see this type of parking lot in, you know, with that, that type of depth. But if we felt it was important to strike off a, a space to back into, we certainly could do that.
Well, I, I defer to, uh, to Jay or Jamel as to whether it's common not to stripe off at that size.
Uh, this is a fairly standard, um, situation that we see at dead ends with a sort of smaller hammerhead at the end, though, you know, I don't know that it's ever been truthed out, so to speak, but, um, we, I certainly have seen this design in, in the years. So I don't know, anyone else have any, any thoughts on it?
All right, I'll let that go.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any comments?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so, it sounds like we need to work out some of the wording for the abutter. You don't, you know, you don't want to necessarily pin the, the chiropractic center into having a, a medical abutter kind of a thing. Um, so it sounds like we need to still work that out. Um, and I don't know that I necessarily agree that nothing's changed with respect to stormwater. Can you, can you tell me, can you assure us that the post-construction flows are equal to or less than the pre-construction flows? Because last time, I was here when you guys were in front of us, there was real concern about off-site impacts to the condo association and some others behind, Rocky, so unless, you know, and, yeah, so...
So, at that point in time, we met all criteria for the, for the mental tax criteria. So Nancy has not changed any of the, you know, any of the ponds, any, any of the storm drainage system in backing back this, these six spaces.
And, and I'm not sure that I agree with that, because you added a catch basin. So you actually may have impacted some of the stormwater to some of the study points, so, and the point I'm getting at too is that if it was just given to staff on Friday, I don't necessarily feel like we're at a point to, to move forward with a motion, I guess. I, I want to give staff the opportunity to weigh in.
I assume this is on. Um, so, originally, there was a catch basin out here that now has become a field-in-line. And we added the basin right here in the corner. Originally, this was the corner of the parking lot, we pulled that back, and we added the basin right there in line. So this, what was the corner of the parking lot, didn't change, it's just going to be a field-in-line now. We pulled it back, we added the basin right there. So, this pond didn't change, all this grading didn't change, this pond didn't change, none of that changed from the last meeting, we just added catch basin right there, catch that water. I think the, the plans that were sent in earlier, uh, in response to the, to the staff's comments, showed, uh, like if you look at your plan, it shows a little paved area down to this basin, and, you know, staff comments were that that probably wasn't such a great idea, uh, because of winter conditions, and, and we agreed, and thought, you know, a better way to do it would be just add that basin so that it would be ready in the corner, and catch the water off the parking lot, leave this one catching the water that might be there. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward, pretty simple.
You all set, Rob?
I think so. For now. For now, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I honestly don't see a lot of changes other than, than last time, so I don't have any, I asked my questions last time, I don't really see, other than take out the six spaces and make it less impervious service, I don't see anything different than what I saw last time, and I was okay with it last time, so I'm still okay with it.
Thanks. Nick?
Yeah, I think, I'm going to say both, I've reviewed this a few times now, and I think, um, I'm glad the applicant was able to reduce the number of parking spaces, which was something that we had asked for at the last meeting. I would say that, um, as far as the proposed language that, uh, I guess Nancy and the applicant had come up with, um, can you go over for me how you, um, that trip generation, is it, is there like a bible of types of businesses that have a trip generation count? Or is it, if you had, there is, okay.
Exactly. And Nancy's proposal language here is about three sentences, and I could read it before, just didn't know it, but...
But it's pretty standard, right? So if, if you have a dentist's office, it's, so it could be a tattoo parlor, that generated the same amount of trips as the dentist's office, it could be a tattoo parlor, correct? I don't have a problem with tattoo parlor, I'm just saying, it's, but there is something that shows you exactly...
If you tie the traps, if you tie the traps, so I think that that's primarily what...
Yeah, yeah, that, no, I'm just, I'm just clarifying, so, we wouldn't see it again unless it exceeded the amount of trip approvals that this is generating under dental medical offices. Okay. I'm good.
Angela, do you have something?
Um, I guess I'm curious about the language, just because there are, uh, at least 10 editions of the I T E manual that has slightly different numbers associated with it, so for staff's clarification, to know what, what, I guess, to be specis, be specific in what you are noting, and so that we know what, what trips we're, we're working against, whereas, I think that would be important, too. To know what the, that trip threshold you're, you're trying to, to make sure we're under.
So, if you don't mind, but can you just read, read both, two, three, there's four sentences here, I think that's important.
Sure.
Nancy proposed that, that the note actually say, "The leasable area for this project must consist of a traffic generator that is known greater than a medical dental office use, as identified in the project's traffic impact study." Period. "Any tenant used that proposes an increase in trip generation beyond the equivalent of a medical dental office use, occupy the lease space, shall require review until one week." Period.
A quick follow-up to that. Is the larger medical building would generate more trips, right? So is that tied to a square footage, or, uh, there were doctors, is there, is there a...
Yeah.
How, how's that tied together?
So, it would be tied with usable, the leasable spaces in the building.
Okay. So based on square footage? Okay.
Susan?
Clarification. There's material that we haven't seen yet, so they're going to be coming back.
Well, I think that's a question for the board.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because there are things in here that we haven't touched on. Now, for example, I really do want to see the materials, and if, if they're here, you can show me where those are. Um, staff seems to be pretty consistent about the fact that we need to be very clear that the park, that the number of parking stalls is not too intense for the site. Yes? I mean, this is what you wrote. I'm not making this up.
It's in our comments.
The question for the planning board is whether or not the use is proposed for the building, which necessitates this, the number of parking stalls is too intense for the site. That's a pretty big question, and, um, I don't see that we've come even close to taking that on. I mean, we've even nudged up against it a couple of times, but it still is an open question. So, I don't know what to do about the fact that it's an open question, that we can't even really create...
I was not at the last meeting, but my impression of it was that there actually was a fair amount of discussion about it, and that the board generally got to the point where they were reasonably comfortable, given a couple of modifications that were, that were made. I know, I mean, I, I think staff interpret that as staff sort of reminding the board what that sort of threshold is, and what that discretion is, but...
It says it's a question. I'm sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to beat this, but I'm, I'm confused, because I thought from the beginning that there was too much parking for this particular spot, but if it's been decided, then I'll just cross that whole line out and forget about it.
If I may, because I chaired the last meeting, there was an extensive amount of time discussing parking, which is how we arrived at the request for them to reduce the number of parking spots by six. If my memory serves me, I believe it was Rachel's suggestion, and I, I agreed, I think...
I agreed as well, that, the, I was, yeah...
It was pretty clear, I believe, to... It was pretty clear, I believe, to the applicant that was...
Just come on.
Right. I think that was the board's desire, and I think that was communicated during the last meeting.
And if I might, I think staff just echoing that, because we hadn't actually seen the proposal. It was sort of a, okay, we're talking about this generally, it sounds good, so we wanted to be sure of the board. Now that you have an actual paper document in front of you that's articulated what was generally talked about, just reaffirm the board's comfort level. So, I think that's really the, and that's Jamel, Angela, you have a different, you know, different element to...
My recollection is the same as Nick's. We agreed that if the six were eliminated, it would be okay.
But I think to Susan's point, too, we, there are things we haven't seen, like architecture, and I, that was my point about allowing staff time to respond to the comments that were only received on Friday.
We've got samples here.
Oh, okay.
Did you have a... I did think that the last meeting, we encountered the parking, and it came away with the thought that the board was satisfied, we added six spaces for that, that net.
She's...
As far as the architecture, the interviewer's been here, she's been here, I think, for three meetings, I think she's actually spoke to two, in two meetings, presented the architecture. Now, what we did tell you, the only thing that I can think of that we didn't tell you is that at those two meetings, what color of building was going to be unprepared. I'll show that to you tonight if you'd like to see it. But the building itself, the architecture of the building, I believe we showed that to you, that's been submitted for a couple of rounds, and so I feel like the board had brought in the working team for the building, and we're satisfied with that, again, with a couple of colors. As far as the plot plan itself, the site plan itself, we submitted a site plan with six spaces taken off in time to get on with the meeting. And so the staff did get that, they didn't like the way we did the catch basin and the corner of that. And so Nancy quickly responded, thinking that the board might, the staff might get a chance Friday to see it. But, you know, that's, that's in an effort to address the staff comments, comments again. So, I feel like we've responded to quite a few of these things.
I generally share that understanding. I guess, and I could, to me, the biggest question, and others can certainly chime in, to me, the biggest question that will determine whether we're prepared to entertain a motion tonight is around the comfort level of having staff review the stormwater plan that was submitted on Friday as a, as a condition. And that's, you know, and that, and that's at a couple of levels. One is the extent to which the board is comfortable with that, based on what we know about everything else. And, not to put them on the spot, I always hate to do this, but whether that is something that is within the sort of reasonable realm of what staff typically be expected to review as a condition of approval. My sense is it's kind of pushing up against it a little bit.
I think so.
And I'm always, I certainly understand, I always understand applicants' desire to always be pushing timing-wise, but...
I, I'll chime in for the stormwater review. I think, I think I've said since sketch plan, this is a pretty simple site, that stormwater system is pretty complicated for some reason. And so that's where we've gotten into more of the details, and so this has become a bigger issue about stormwater than probably it needs to be. And then also, last meeting, we heard a lot from the abutters, and I think it would be helpful for me to do a further review and to work back and forth with the applicant, is, I don't know if last time, and maybe Nick could clarify, Chair, was, we got back to the conversation of, are we only trying to get to pre-development peak flows? And that, I can definitely review, and we can go through and say, yep, this is the system, and we can tweak it, and we can get there. The, the question was, is it an adverse impact to the abutting properties? Which is a totally different conversation, which is an opinion that the board needs to clearly state, because I cannot do that.
And this, if I might, Angela, this, this sort of gets to the question between sort of peak flows and total volumes.
Right.
And that's really where we talked quite a bit around last meeting, that, yep, you can control the peak flows, so the rate that's coming off, it never exceeds whatever that current rate is now, but as is stated, you know, volumes are always going to increase. That rate's going to be a longer duration.
And then, that's why maybe, maybe that was answered last time by the elimination of the six spaces. If the board is comfortable with, okay, they're reducing some of the volume because they reduced some of the impervious, then that would give me direction to say, okay, as long as they're meaning pre-development. But I, I need to, is that what the board is saying? I, I need some clarification.
Do you want to really chime in?
Please.
So, yeah, that, my impression, and I think only Rachel and Rick, were we the three there? And then, who was fourth? Because Robyn, you weren't there, Susan?
Roger.
Roger.
Roger was here. So there's three of us four, and so you two are going to have to help me with. The way I left that impression of that meeting, when they walked away from this, was the really big outstanding request was remove the six spots. Beef up your landscaping a little bit, and I think that was it. I mean, as far as, my understanding of the stormwater discussion was, I think the town had already said, Angela, you were so eloquent, said, you've met the, you've met the threshold to pre-existing conditions, you've met that. But there will be an increase in volume. All right? That was to be, the elimination of that, those six spaces, we thought were going to help not only alleviate some of those volume concerns, but the neighbors' concerns, because less impervious surface and an additional buffer. And they have a stormwater treatment system that is, like you said, more complex than what is probably necessary on the site.
Not necessary. And again...
This is where...
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding from the meeting.
That was my understanding from the meeting, and Rick, do you...
My recollection is, well, and we talked about, you know, we talked about peak flows, and how they had to meet peak, pre-development peak flows, and Angela educated me as to how that all works. As far as the volume goes, I'm, I'm sure it's something we should be concerned about, because they have neighbors. But my point last week, or last month, was that, that something's going in there anyway. And, you know, that spot's not going to be vacant, right there on that corner. So something's going in there anyway. And it, he eliminated the six spaces. As far as the total impervious area and things like that, you put a pet store in there, or a Dairy Queen or something, and you're still going to have pavement. So, you know, if they meet the peak flows, and I think, though, what Corey said is valid, Angela should have, you know, i- if we were to move with a motion tonight, we should still have, Angela should still reserve the right to veto the motion. I totally agree with that.
Right.
But, and my recollection is the same as Nick's, and Nick's and I and Rachel Wood, I think we all concur that that's what we talked about last week. And I think they left with the impression that, or last month, they left with the impression that if they eliminated the six spaces, that would alleviate our stormwater concerns. Now, we can change it again now, but I don't think that's fair or makes sense.
Yeah, I, and, I'm sorry.
Don't, I need to apologize.
And I, and I feel like this is kind of a rehash of what we really spent, I want to say it was over an hour and a half on, if not two hours, on the one project on one meeting. And this is the, what, third or fourth time, Rocky, this has been here? Fourth, so the fourth time I've been here. And I am completely considerate of the fact that staff here has, you know, needs some guidance and things like that, but you guys are very capable, and I'll say it right out, like, I full faith in you guys, and if there was ever a problem, I know you guys would bring it to us. So, to see for a fifth time over something that we've discussed over many hours, I think I, I have reservations about. I'm personally prepared to make a motion to advance it tonight, based on our feedback from the last meeting and what I've seen here. But that, you know, again, if staff says they are extremely uncomfortable, then I would, I would, I would sit here and reserve that.
As I typically say, staff will always act at the direction of the board, and so we'll, we did, we do have a draft motion. We weren't sure where the board was going to get tonight, so we'll hand that around, so you can read that.
Can we see the materials?
The siding.
Do they have one?
Oh, the building materials, yes. I just wanted to sort of put out there that, you know, staff is prepared, whichever direction the board chooses to go, we can support.
Rocky, would you mind, or would you mind walking the materials around for us to see?
Well, the one side panel is supposed to be two inch square, so I can put that out.
All right.
Boy, I'm glad I waited. That is so exciting. Wow.
Well, I'm going to put that one there.
It's worth waiting.
Back to the mic.
Somebody want to touch the material?
I don't want to touch it.
Sometimes people do.
It's dirty.
Okay. So, the building is primarily white on white, white trim, white siding. There are areas, I think we've got a rendering.
Okay.
I guess we got areas that look a little gray, because they're shallow, but it's white on white, white trim, white siding. Two types of siding, some of the building will be clavicle style, some of the building will be shingle style. Clavicle style's on the top, shingles on the bottom. That's the point, those areas out. On the, well, it's hard to see. The gables will be shingle style.
Staff, no, I was...
And the main areas of the building will be clavicle style. The lower area along, just above the foundation, up about thirty to thirty-six inches, will be the stone, the shingle.
Okay.
There it is.
I don't want to be too long.
That's a better rendering.
At least a long day.
Well, that's showing shingle style on the, on the parking lot side, if you will.
This is...
Do you have another company here?
Uh...
I love that one right here. Clavicle style on the back sides, alongside. It was a mix of two styles on the side. I think it's right near the back.
It's almost as good as the middle spot.
Does anyone have any comments or questions about architecture or materials?
Rocky, which is the roof?
The roof is...
Which? That one, okay. Thank you.
It's a black lead, it's not screwed up. And it's not protected aside, it's broken up, it's on a straight free cow.
So, thank you, thank everyone for the discussion. And Nick, I particularly appreciate the, Nick and others who were at the last meeting, I appreciate the institutional memory on that.
Nick did a great job of chair, by the way.
Yeah, so did he, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's getting hot.
We eat $20.
At 10:28, he said, "We're about done."
Yeah. So, given, given everything that Nick described and that, and that we all discussed, I'm certainly comfortable putting forward a conditional approval motion with findings, and you all have that in front of you, and take a moment if you haven't already to skim over that. The findings are fairly pro forma, but it's important on something like this to make sure that those are, those are articulated into the record. Did someone have a question?
Yeah, sorry.
Yep.
So, under conditions, we'd have a condition that said, prior to issuing a building permit, staff shall review, review and approve existing storm, revised stormwater plan.
Number seven. Yes, I believe that's...
Seven there?
Number seven has a requirement for the engineer.
And then the condition is actually 1E.
1E is the actual condition, and 7 is a finding.
Sort of couple those together.
And then, the 1A, 1A can be, I think, wordsmithed and fleshed out to address the proposed, address and incorporate some version of the proposed language that Nancy St. Clair proposed regarding potential changes of use from medical office. And...
You could just change, any change in use that generates more trips than designated in, in original study.
Yeah, at this point, I sort of thought maybe a plan note that specify any change in use that differs from the approved traffic report will require planning, planning board approval.
I, I don't know if Angela wanted the specific number of trips in there, because there's so many different versions of the...
Yeah, I, I think what we can do is, if this condition, if the board's comfortable with this condition, we can work with the applicant on what the actual note on the plan says, we can wordsmith. I think we can work off Nancy's more, you know, a couple of sentences and, and sort of work on that. I agree. I think it might be worth actually locking in what that is, because...
Trips.
Because trips, as she said, I think we're up to the ITE 10th manual, and who knows when the legislative comes, so if we hammer a number, then it's easy.
And then I'm thinking, just, if you read all these, please review and approve last time. All right. On that note, I move to approve the project titled Scarborough Family Chiropractic proposed by Blackpoint Holdings LLC as depicted on the plan set prepared by St. Clair Associates dated February 26, 2018, with the following findings, waivers and conditions. Findings as stated herein. One waiver, given the adequate landscaping provided on the proposed island located between the two parking fields and throughout the site, the waiver request for section 4 dot D dot B in the site plan review ordinance is approved. Conditions, number one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the plan set shall be revised to include a, a plan note that specifies any change in use from...
Sorry.
From that...
That, scratch from?
That differs.
That differs from the approved traffic report will require planning board approval. B, a plan note for the contractor to confirm that the landscape plan shall be coordinated with the grading and utility plan. C, a plan note that indicates that any additional signage proposed for the building, i.e. for the tenants, will need to be reviewed and approved by the planning department. D, provide an update in plan notation related to the proposed timing of the parking lot, like fixtures. E, revise the stormwater management plans and details for the staff comments memo dated March 12, 2018. Plans to be reviewed and approved by planning department staff. Condition number two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit payment of the traffic impact fees of $39,124.78. Number three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall work with the fire department to ensure a location for a Knox box, exterior access key box is provided. Number four, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the proposed signage plan shall be reviewed and approved by planning department staff. And condition number five, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. That is the motion. Second, any further discussion?
Uh, yes. I'm, I, the plans that you've, plan set that you've noted here was dated 2/26/18, and I think we were just told that a new one has been made available.
Mm-hmm.
So should we have a different date?
Uh, at this point, we haven't reviewed those plans, so what, what the next, what that first condition talks about in terms of revising the plans will become the plan set of record. So, at this point, I think I would leave it at the date that the board has had in your, in your files for your review. And then, again, if you're comfortable with what, with staff reviewing it, which sounds like you are, then we'll get that date.
Okay.
Anything else, any other discussion? Anything else, any other discussion?
I don't feel like we've given Angela adequate direction as to whether or not it's peak flow versus the drainage system that hasn't been designed to not impact streets, adjacent properties, and downstream properties, and local soils and vegetation. So...
Angela, do you feel that you have adequate direction from the board?
I heard from Nick that you just want to meet pre-development flow rates. And that's all I'm going to be reviewing.
Consensus.
It's not my consensus. I'll be, I will be a dissenting vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Start the second motion. All in favor? Approved with one in the opposition.
Opposed, yep.
Thank you. As previously noted, items nine and 10 were tabled due to time constraints. Item number 11, staff report.
Yep, just real quickly. I sent email earlier, which some of you have already kindly responded to, and some may not have seen yet. So, but at last week, we had our first sort of workshop hearing on the Scarborough Downs master plan, and we sort of held that outside of the board's regular meeting. Board members seem to indicate that you want to continue along that pathway. So at this point, after discussing with the applicant's team and the chair, we're looking for, to potentially have a second workshop on the master plan on April 5, which will be a Thursday, same week as our regular meeting. So if you get an opportunity to check your emails and respond, let me know your availability. That would be great. That is all I have to report.
I'll just very quickly add that, you know, part of the, part of the thinking there is, it did seem beneficial to kind of break that out. And one of the other options on the table for the next workshop would have been maybe the same day or the same evening as the planning board meeting, which sort of didn't seem like it would give us the same space. So, yeah, just taking note of that. Any administrative amendments?
I do not have any administrative amendments.
Any planning board correspondence beyond the ones, the correspondence that was referenced earlier? Any planning board comments? Thanks for hanging out, hanging with us here. Move to adjourn.
Second. That was to you, that was to you guys. The board.